All set there, Jeremy?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, and letting Dave St. Laurent in too. Uh, yeah, we're, we're on, live on YouTube right now, Ethan, so we're good to go.
Okay. All right, it's five o'clock, five oh one now, so we just go ahead and get started. Uh, this is the Camden Planning Board Meeting of January twentieth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, we're gonna review a couple of, uh, applications tonight. Um, but first I wanted to go ahead and get any, uh, public comments on non-agenda items.
All right, that's gonna be me, I think.
Um, jump right in there, Jeremy.
All right, thanks. Uh, so we were looking at the calendar today, um, Genie and I, and Janice to get things to voters, um, and for June. Um, we've been talking about the zoning amendments for housing. Um, my plan is to have a draft to you guys, final draft to you on the third. Um, and then on February third, you'd set a public hearing for February seventeenth. Um, Janice then needs to, um, note, um, advertise a select board hearing. She needs to get that in the paper on the eighteenth, so. Third and seventeenth, what we're up against, so we're gonna do that in order to get that to the select board, so they can do the appropriate, um, process to get some zoning amendments to voters in June. And right now, what I've got working, and we've talked about for a while, are, um, in the village, and I'll just summarize really quickly. Um, and I'll try to get you a draft, um, early next week if possible, um, in the village zone, allowing one and two family homes on lots in the ci- in the, in the town. Um, and that would be keep, keeping the minimum lot size at ten thousand square feet, but allowing a second family. Um, you know, adding a second dwelling unit to that home. And then reducing the, um, dwelling unit, um, requirement, lot size per dwelling unit to five thousand square feet for multifamily. Um, multifamilies, anything over two-family home. And then in the village extension, the thought is that we were talking about is to allow, uh, to change for, um, lot, minimum lot size requirement that is currently forty thousand square feet for lots on, um, without sewer, going down to the state minimum, which is twenty thousand square feet. And at the same time, allowing, um, lots in the village extension, um, adding multifamily into that, which is currently allowed only as an open space subdivision, to allow those multifamilies in the village extension on sewer, um, to be, um, as a permitted use. Um, they may need to go through subdivision process, but that is what it is, um, we can't change that. Um, and then also I was looking at, just throwing this out and I'll share it with you now, but I'll include it, is in the village extension on sewer, um, since the minimum lot size is currently the same as the village, my thought is to allow one and two-family homes as well, um, in the village extension on sewer. Um, it just seems to make sense to me. Um, and those are the changes that we're looking at for November third or February third, and also the, um, requirement, the shoreline zoning, um, state law that requires us to, um, have, um, projects that are permitted to provide pre and post photographs, um, to the code officer. That's requirement, new requirement in chapter one thousand, which is the state shoreline zoning guidelines, we have to be consistent with that. So that will be also, um, a public hearing on that on the fourteenth. Um, makes sense, that's all I have, Ethan. Um, didn't want to, uh, take up too much time and, and dive into any of those, or even take questions on it, really. Okay?
I'm mute, Ethan.
Indeed, I am, thank you, Andy. Um, uh, just looking around to make sure there's no other public comment, um, and thanks, Jeremy, for that update. Um, and seeing none, Jeremy, you don't have anything around on your.
No.
Various platforms.
Can I just ask really quick, was that, is that pretty much everyone's kinda recollection of where we're going and what, what was the desired, um, outcome? Yeah, okay, good, thanks.
Yeah. All right, um, we can go ahead then and move on to the first item on the agenda, which I have as, hold on, sorry. Uh, yeah, the one hundred Mount Batty Street, um, the application, um, by Michael Mullins and presented by Will Gartley, so, um, we'll start out with having, um, I'll go over the public hearing process. Um, we'll have, uh, the applicant's presentation, which may be preceded a little bit by a, uh, summary by Jeremy. And then we'll go ahead with questions from the board. We will then open up for the first round of public comments. Then, uh, further questions from the board, if any. Uh, second round of public comment, if any, uh, comments from the applicant, and then final comments from the board, when we will, uh, then move to vote and close the public hearing. Okay, so we're at the very beginning of that, which is the applicant's presentation, I don't know, Jeremy, if you wanted to give a quick summary, if you wanted, just let Will go ahead and take it.
We, you need to review the site plan review. And clarify who's voting.
Do, Ethan, you wanna do that before I do a quick little, uh?
Yeah.
And this is, you could ju- I can summarize for you, Ethan, really quick, maybe, um, that this is a site plan, um, approval, um, under section, article twelve, section three, on the approval criteria of, of, um, section four. Um, and it's for a, um, proposal to pave, strip and remove work materials, create areas more than ten thousand square feet within a, um, five-year period for non-residential uses. And just reminding everyone that this project was, um, for the most part approved in the same, um, configuration. A couple of years ago, the project just expired, um, they're coming back for reapproval. Um, and, um, we do have some public comment, but Ethan, go ahead back to Chris O on say who's voting and then go through, uh, conflict.
Sure. Yep. Um, first, we need to know if any board members have conflict of interest or bias with regard to one hundred Mount Batty Street. Uh, Anita? Pat?
No.
Chris O?
No.
Andy?
No.
Mark?
No.
Okay, and I also have nothing to declare as far as conflict of interest or bias. Um, the members who were present at the site walk on January ten, we did, uh, we did have a site walk in the morning of January ten. Anita, I know you were able to sort of quasi be there virtually with Jeremy's phone, and then, uh, we had Pat, Ken. We had Chris O, we had Andy, and we had Mark and myself all at the site walk. Um, and as far as those at the meeting tonight who will be voting, um, it will be all the members we have present if I'm not mistaken. So that's myself and Anita, Pat, Andy, Chris O, and Mark. Um, and I've already gone over, I'm sorry, the procedure for the public hearing. Um, and I will now turn it over after Jeremy's summary there, we'll go right to Will Gartley, so Will, welcome, and you have the floor.
All right, good evening. Um, Jeremy and Ethan, or if I share my screen, might be easier to point things out.
Please do.
Yep.
All right, everybody see that, okay?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Hmm, it's coming.
Okay.
I don't see it yet, you want me to see if I can try to find mine?
Hmm, it says I'm sharing, let me stop and try again. Now it won't let me stop.
Yeah, it definitely shows the wheel spinning like you are sharing, but it, it hasn't popped up yet.
There it goes.
All right. It's a big file, so maybe that's part of the problem, sorry, um. Yeah, so good evening and thank you, uh, Will Gartley, I'm representing Michael on the one hundred Mount Batty Street, and Michael's actually here with us tonight. And, um, as Jeremy said, this is a project that, uh, we planned a couple of years ago, um, but for a variety of reasons, the project, uh, didn't happen, so we're back before you. And it includes, um, expanding some parking, which is to the north side of the parking lot, this area right now is, uh, there's an existing retaining wall right here. And that is proposed to be removed and a new wall put in here to enlarge this, uh, parking area um, to the south side of the property, and north is, uh, to the right of the page, the south side of the property, we're also expanding some, um, pavement there to make the parking a little more generous and also make the access to the back part of the building, um, a little more generous and less restricted by the parking that happens in this area. Another big improvement is widening the entrance off of Mount Batty Street, there's overhead doors in the building right here that right now with this island here, um, are very difficult to get in and out, and so by opening this up a little bit, and that'll allow better access to those doors. And then the final improvement is, um, the clear story. The building has a flat roof and there's a vertical section with windows and a, a roof there. The windows are very close to the flat roof portion, and so when there's snow, it builds up against them and there's leaking issues, there's also ventilation issues when the snow blocks the vents. So by lifting that two feet, um, it'll just give us some clearance for when that happens. And, um, we're well within the height restriction in that zone to add those additional two feet. At the pre-application meeting, a couple of questions came up regarding, uh, lights and also the stormwater outlet. When this, uh, stormwater system was put in, it was, some of it was put in within Mount Batty Street, so it's really, uh, a combination of, uh, picking up stormwater from Mount Batty Street and off-site, and then also from this property. The outlet, now outlets onto the Fraser property, there's an easement there to allow that outlet, when this was done originally, it was all one parcel. And, um, there was question about that outlet, there is a large stone apron there, and, um, the stone is in good shape and there's no erosion at the outlet, but there is definitely some sand that has been discharged, that's gotten into the system from the streets and the parking lot, so that should be cleaned every once in a while. Um, the other question was about the lighting, and I submitted a photo in our latest submission showing how, uh, Michael had some shields made to retrofit the existing lights on the south side of the building, so that, um, the light would only go down into the side and not out towards the budding properties. Um, since then too, there's been a question about the floor drains inside the building. And, uh, we've had some back and forth between Michael and myself and Jeremy and, and, uh, other town officials about what's going on in the building and where does it all go. There are floor drains in the building and, um, there is an oil and water separator. And we're gonna work with the town to verify that all of that is up to current code and also verify where everything is connected, whether it's to the stormwater system or to the, uh, sanitary system, and again, make sure wherever it's going, it's done correctly. Um, otherwise, I, I know on the site plan, we're showing, um, significant amount of landscaping that was, uh, worked out during the last round. And, um, we also have a, a sign that's proposed in the island, um, and there's a, a picture of that in our submission. That's kind of a summary and, um, certainly open to any and all questions.
Um, I had a question.
Go ahead, Pat.
In one of the comments, I think it's from the pathways committees that came through, they were talking about, um, concern for site vision, I guess on that corner, I'm thinking, where the wall is going to be, it's, you know, where the whole pavement area is extended out, so you've got a new wall there and you've got additional trees. And I hadn't thought of that really when we were there, it wasn't brought up, but I didn't, I guess first of all, I wasn't sure if it would or wouldn't be an issue, and then they also talked about potentially getting a sidewalk going down Mount Batty Street to connect the Riverwalk to the sidewalk that's eventually gonna be on Washington Street up to Shertail Point. And was that, was there room for that, or do you put it on the other side of the road, I wasn't clear on that either.
Yeah, I don't know which side of the road they're thinking, um, there is a little bit of a pinch point right here where the pavement makes the two, the corner and the property corner. Um, otherwise, there's quite a bit of space within the right-of-way on Mount Batty Street, again, except for that, that little pinch point right there, I think that, I'll just quickly measure that distance, it's, um, from that monument to the pavement, it's just about five feet, so. I mean, there might be room, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a lot of room to grade or make changes to elevations as you come around that corner, there's also a, um, a drain pipe there, so. You know, it would be, it would have to be a coordination effort with, with the town, unless the sidewalk was on the opposite side of Mount Batty Street, which it could very well be. Um, as far as the site distance, I don't think that this landscaping should create a problem, because you're actually not, you know, you're, the middle of the corner is, is right here, um, so you, you know, you're coming around that, um, I know, it's pretty wide open there, I, I'd be surprised if it's gonna create any sort of, uh, of site distance issue. And the tree on that corner is intended to be, you know, a taller tree, so not, you know, at the bottom, it,
Yeah.
Once it grows a little bit, you should be looking underneath the limbs.
Right, okay.
Anita?
Ethan, I was just gonna mention, I mean, I'm scaling that off, Will. Edge of pavement to the center of that proposed tree. I mean, that's like sixteen feet.
Yep.
Coming around that corner.
Hmm.
Oh, that's a good.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Are, are we in a hearing? Like, are, we, should we be holding our questions till a bit later in the process?
Probably.
Nope, that's what this time is for.
Okay, I'm just, just clarifying.
Yeah, there's a difference between the, the information gathering stage and then the deliberation stage.
Yep.
So we're in the information gathering stage at this moment. Um, so yeah, do, try to keep your, your questions or comments limited to getting information from the applicant and not, uh, you know, deliberating, but Anita, I see your hand has been up.
Yeah, um, I serve on the pathways committee. And, um, I think we would, we would be interested in making a connection between the Riverwalk that ends at the Seabright Dam and, uh, Washington Street sidewalk extension. Once that is complete, which is due to happen this coming, uh, summer. So, um, the, what, what seems to make sense is to have that extension go along, um, that south side of Mount Batty Street rather than on the other side, because on the other side, we may, uh, based on the sketches of setbacks, and that's it, we may run into problems with riders, rights of way on, and there are a number of residential properties there. So, um, I would, I would ask if it's possible that that corner, the pinch point, um, could be made amenable to, uh, a six-foot, say, a six-foot width in, in terms of the pathway at that corner. The rest of it looks like it's fine, but, um, that does look like it could be limiting. And also on that side of the road, since you're going past, people are accessing the, um, the food pantry, which is that next property to the west, and then there is the affordable housing development above that before you get to Washington Street. So logically, that's the side of the road that it makes sense to have that extension on when we, when and if the town can do that. So I'm asking that the corner.
Is this a question for the applicant, Anita?
Uh.
I mean, I, I think there's a couple of things here.
Yeah.
And I just, can I just? Am I in really quick, Ethan and Anita? I mean, I think, you know, we're talking about a, a, a sidewalk that's, we haven't contemplated yet, I know the pathways committee's talked about it, I'm not sure, Dave, who's, who's here from Public Works Director, has talked about a sidewalk, but, I mean, you know, we haven't talked about any of this, I think, on the, on the town staff level, I mean, that's a, I appreciate it, and I'm just, I mean, we haven't talked about, I mean, we gotta look at rights of way, we've gotta look, you know, we don't have the right to go on someone's property or use someone's property unless they're willing to work with us or we take it. Um, this side of Mount Batty, as you come around the bend facing, you know, so the front of this building seems like from a pedestrian safety perspective, the wrong side of the street to have a sidewalk on, you've got a lot of infrastructure there, you've got drainage there, you've got a lot of cars in and out as opposed to the other side, um, which you're not dealing with the drainage that's coming down Mount Batty Street trying to wrap around the bend. So I'm, I'm just, I'm just trying to share that, I think we need to.
Yeah, and I think actually that this is all really not relevant to this application, Anita, I'm sorry, it's, um,
It's hypothetical.
It's a worthy, it's a worthy consideration, but not something that's really up in front of us for this, this hearing.
I understand, but it is helpful sometimes to just take a little higher view on, um, other plans that are happening in the area and that, uh, if, if they can be adjusted, um, without trouble, that it's good to know before rather than after. I just wanted to mention that as a possibility in case there's some slight change, it doesn't matter to anybody, that the, um, that the owner may be willing to make to make that a possibility in the future.
Yeah. Anita, I appreciate it, I think coming down that side of the street from the food pantry makes sense, but I think, to be honest, I think from a, from a, a, a sidewalk perspective, you'd wanna cross the road there to get back to the other side, 'cause it's a dangerous spot to have people, a public sidewalk right in front of this facility, in my, my view, and you've got a ton of infrastructure in the road, um, right there. And I've just thrown it out there, but we can certainly work on it, and Mike, Mike Mullins, I mean, he's, you know, I, I don't, I think he'd be amenable to, to working with the town, but, you know, we're on, we need to stay within our right-of-way when we're doing sidewalk work. Um, unless we're gonna go down the road of a taking, and we're not even contemplating that yet, and there's not a lot of room over there, so. We just need to keep that in perspective, we'll certainly work with whoever, Dave and I will work with the pathways committee to try to figure out an appropriate location for a future sidewalk.
Yeah, and Jeremy, thank you, but I really need to keep this meeting on point and moving forward, we've got a lot to cover tonight.
Go ahead.
Um, so anyone else have any questions for the applicant, Pat, are you?
Oh, no, I'm good, thanks.
Okay.
I, I have a question. Um, we, we received an as-built plan of this original site, and this part of the lot where, that's going to be expanded for parking on the bottom right of the lot. It wasn't on that plan, it was a separate lot. Will, do you know if that, if there was a site plan to amend to include that lot?
Yes, it was, there was, uh, there were changes, there was, there was actually a subdivision here that included where the food pantry is now.
Oh, I remember that.
Right, so this, there were changes made to that subdivision over time, um, and at one point, these two lots were combined.
I was just wondering whether it needed to include a note on the plan that this lot was added, but the site plan never amended, but it was a subdivision plan, you say?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
I think we're catching that now.
Okay, um, seeing the further comments or questions from the board, um, we're gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Um, and we will, uh, encourage any comments from the public. Um, we'll check with live participants first, and then after that, maybe, Jeremy, you wanna read into the record some of the comments we've all received.
Sure, and I, I, I think one of the commenters, Sherri Fraser, is here, um, with us today, we did include her comments uh, last time when we, when we had the workshop on this, and Sherri is here, everyone was forwarded her comments, and Sherri, feel free to chime in right now.
Can we, can we stop sharing?
Sure.
I can stop.
Hang on one second. Hey, Phil, can you turn off the radio? And not for now. Um.
And if you are for the public and you're going to comment, please state your name and add residence for the record.
Uh, I think I'm, am I unmuted?
No, you, yeah, we can hear you, Sherri.
Okay. Um, my name's Sherri Fraser, and I live at ninety-six Mount Batty Street next door. And, um, I still, I appreciate Will going out and looking at the erosion where the culvert comes through. I, I still think there is erosion down below the culvert caused by the flow off their parking lot, but, um, I'd be happy to look at it with him. It's down below where the rocks are. And, um, and as far as the lights go, uh, the ones that have the, um, shields, that have shields built around them are somewhat effective, although the light still escapes out the side, but the, there are other lights that are not shielded, and sometimes they're on and sometimes they're not, so I'd like those lights addressed as well. And, um, yeah, I think that's, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Sherri.
Hmm.
Any other members of the public, Jeremy, out there?
Um, I have comments from, um, Lynn Donovan, um, everyone's been provided those, you want me to read those into the record?
We ought to, yep.
All right, uh, okay, this is from Sherri, uh, no, sorry, Lynn Donovan. Um, and I'll read it just verbatim. Um, hi, I was pleased to have finally gotten to the post office and picked up the notice Thursday's hearing. Michael reached out to the neighborhood several years ago to talk about his ideas for taking, uh, a part of the lawn across from my house, one twenty-five Mount Batty Street, and my neighbors close to the damn driveway. Uh, they and I met with him, he produced elaborate drawing to be open to our concerns, especially regarding noise and lighting. Then nothing happened, I spoke to him nearly a year ago and was told it would be completed by May of twenty twenty-one, that didn't happen. What did happen, and I have spoken with him about it, but to no avail, was that trucks, boat trailers, enclosed trailers and cars been parked on the grass all the way up to the space across the driveway. His argument was that the lawn has always been used for parking, I've been living here since two thousand and seven and has never been used for parking until he bought the property. I was explicitly told in the drawing supported it, that the proposed parking lot would be at the lower end of the lawn area only and would be fenced and landscaped at its upper boundary toward the food pantry and along the edge of the road to the corner. Lighting would be the minimalness, would be the minimal necessary for safety and downshielded, although my concerns about introducing light pollution where there is now none continues. At first, I thought that Michael was being reasonable and considerate to deal with, but nothing has come from his original proposal, and I'm concerned that nothing of the original agreements to protect the view across my, from my house, the current lack of light pollution and noise protection will be maintained, I hope they will, and that they will be able to see the current proposed plans, that I will be able to see the current proposed plans to know if a further conversation with Michael is called for. I emailed her after that and said, uh, the approval's expired for the project, hence the need to have the planning board review and approve this again. Proposed changes to the site can be reviewed on the town's calendar, go to the plan, I told her how to find this, the site plan. Uh, there you will find the entire application supporting plans, page thirty-three of the package shows the proposed site plan. There will be a cut in the grade to facilitate the new parking lots' connection to the existing driveway parking area. A budding Mount Batty, uh, facing you will be a new wooden fence and four trees and four rhododendrons. Town buffer requirements should, should provide you a pretty good buffer. The surface of the lot will be about five feet below the new fence and buffer area. There will be a retaining wall between parking lot and the wooden fence, again, the proposed buffer meets the town zoning ordinance requirements, and I believe this is the plan that was agreed to previously, let me know if you have any questions, feel free to join the Zoom link. Uh, she responded and I've copied you guys, um, Jeremy, thank you, I'm fine with all that, expecting, accepting I had talked to Michael about screen, a screen of evergreens more effective than what he had proposed to block the lights. I was awake at three AM mentally composing an email for you, um, apologizing for my curtiness and hoping wasn't too critical of Michael, and completely forgot. Appreciate your response and if she can, she'll join. So that's where we are. And I think Michael was working with her and I, I don't know if this was the exact landscape plan that Michael and the neighbors agreed to. Steve Wilson, the code officer at the time was working on that one and I, I just wasn't with that. So um, those are the comments that I have from the public. That's it. There you go, Ethan.
Okay. And we have nothing else on the other?
No.
Media.
Let me find my phone. Nope. Nope, you're good.
Okay. Okay, now we can open up, go ahead and close the public comment portion.
At some point you should get, um, Dave St. Laurent's comments.
Oh, correct.
Public Works Director.
Yep. Dave, are you here?
Everyone will note that, you know, staff that is required to comment provides comments. Dave sent his, wanted to chat with you, you folks about this as well. So.
Great. Go ahead, Dave.
Good evening. Um, so everybody knows that we have the site plan sign off for the department heads, the ones that are involved in some of these projects. So generally, um, you know, it's just a matter of checking things over and checking the boxes. There's no real apparent problems, but part, part of the, the, um, part of what I found with this project was when I went, I really wasn't sure how the stormwater system was, um, laid out. So we went and smoke tested the, uh, the, um, the, um, stormwater system in this area to see exactly where it's tied into and, um, we found, as we were doing that, we found some locations that had some slight oil sheen in the catch basins, which kind of prompted me to kind of do a little bit further investigation. Now, I, I don't want to say that there's like a catastrophic thing going on here, but it's indicative of some kind of a potential for, um, you know, some downstream water quality problems. So, um, the more, more I looked into it, the more I was a little puzzled where it was coming from, and I still really haven't figured that out yet. Part of what I've found is that, um, you know, you have, you have a facility that is storing vehicles outside, um, which could be a source, could be a source from somebody going around the corner. There's one catch basin on the corner, but there's multiple ones in the parking area. And there's vehicles stored outside of there, which, you know, maybe one of those vehicles was looking, maybe it wasn't. Um, but then the more I looked into it, the more I found that there was two lines that appear to be going into the building. So, um, then I didn't really know what the building was ultimately used for. I knew there was some storage in there, but I, and I knew people were working on vehicles a little bit, but there's a wash bay and there's, you know, probably a little bit more mechanical work being done in there that I was aware of. So I think it's important that we, as Will said, we, we, we do a really good job trying to figure out where exactly the floor drain system and if there's a oily water separator, where that all goes. Because if those are going to the stormwater system, they can't. Um, so that's, that's, that needs to be corrected. And I think, um, I did kind of talk a little bit about my concern with, you know, the potential for oil, um, from vehicles being parked. And I think they incorporated in an oily water separator in the upper lot. Um, and I think Will can probably verify that, but I think that was on the, the plan um, that he provided. Um, but, but that doesn't deal with the existing problem that I was finding in the catch basins down below. So, um, you know, I, I am stepping up some of the inspections on some of these improvements that are done all around town. And this isn't something that we've been doing in the past, but it's something I'm doing more of. So another reason I'm talking to you folks, it's not just about this project, but it's in general that, um, you know, we need to probably take a stronger look at some of these things to improve them, um, to improve the water quality downstream. So that's just what I wanted to share with you. I'm not providing any solutions for the problem. I think that's, that's up to Will and the property owner or the applicant. Um, but you know, probably some strong BMPs are going to be necessary and maybe, um, you know, some inspections of the system as Will will talk a little bit about. There is some sediment that is washing out and there is some erosion that's happening downstream of the outfall. And that, that, that is just a matter of managing it and making, uh, and making, uh, people kind of check up on it, make sure it doesn't get worse. So I just wanted the board to be aware of those things as they consider this expansion on the parking lot. And, um, that's all I really wanted to say.
Thank, thank you, Dave. And, um, is, is enforcement on your end on this?
I, I'm not enforcement. I, I mean, really what happened was that that's the code enforcement. I, I'm really just the person that's checking the stormwater system and this is being tied into the stormwater system and expanding the stormwater system. And anytime you do that, parking can contribute to degrading the down, the quality of the water downstream. So we need to make sure that we always implement best management practices and control mechanisms in place to prevent that. So.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Uh, Jeremy, I see your hand up.
Yeah, on the enforcement end, that is, that is a code enforcement issue. And, and yeah, Dave is right. You can't daylight this stuff to a storm system or you can't bring it out to a storm. So we'll be working with and I, I would hope you guys maybe do a condition on this, um, on this approval, if that's where you're going. Um, that required to, um, investigate all of the interior floor drains. Um, it sounds like, I mean, Mike's been doing this and I think he spent some time today on it. It does sound like some of this is going to an oil water separator. But there may be other drains that he's not certain about yet. Um, but we will need to make sure that all interior drains are tied into a oil water separator and are tied into city sewer and not going into the storm system. You would also need to ensure that, uh, he's doing everything of, of, you know, right per, uh, Dave Bolstrich, the wastewater superintendent. Um, and obviously get a permit, uh, for any, um, oil water separator that goes inside the building. So we'll be working on that with, with Mike as he moves forward. I mean, I've been working with Mike for, you know, since I've been here and I, I think he um, understands that these kinds of things are appropriate and need to happen. It is a code issue. So, um, you know, he certainly doesn't want us coming after him over, you know, enforcement wise. I'm sure he'll address it. And if you guys make it part of the condition of this approval, I'm, I'm certain it'll, uh, it'll happen and we won't need to do enforcement. We'll just permit it and make sure. We will, uh, and certainly we'll look at the erosion downstream and you know, that's a tough one downstream. Some of this is getting Mike's parking lot. Some of it is getting Mount Batty Street. And I don't know if that erosion is, comes back into the right of way. Or if, because I mean, Will and I did look at the, the outfall, uh, you know, of that pipe. It's armored. Right now it's armored, the armored. And when I say armor, it's rip wrapped and it's angular rock and it's, there's some leaves on it and some sediment in there, mostly sand.
This is the one that goes under the neighboring driveway?
Yes. Yeah. So I think, I think what Sherry was referring to and what Dave's referring to is further downstream probably because we looked immediately at the outlet. Um, and the outlet was, was pretty stable, but Will and Mike, I'm sure will deal with it, um, on a maintenance issue. Go ahead, Dave.
The, 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 um, stormwater system daylights just, just to the left of the driveway as you enter.
Yeah.
And, and then, and then what hap, and it looks okay there other than some sediment or, you know, sand. Um, but, but it's what's happening is it kind of sheet flows a little bit, a short distance towards the road. And then when it goes to the road, um, there's a short distance there where it's eroding. And I think that might be where the neighbors, um, probably uh, recognizing as being some, some erosion. I mean, it's not, it's not a lot. But what I've found is that, um, when they engineer these things, they make good accommodations for where the discharge is. Um, but what happens is when you add water flow and, uh, speed and velocity, um, it's further down where those, where the, where the improvements haven't been made, where the erosion can happen. That's usually what you find in a lot of these situations like, I mean, there's several around town, right immediately at the outfall, it looks okay. But then when you get a little bit away from the outfall, you still have that same water moving through there and it will carry away and erode the, especially if it's fill, it'll erode away the, um, the earth in those locations. And then carry sediment down, down into the stormwater system. So I mean, that's not really happening that much in this spot. But where it is happening, it's further down from the outfall and it's not extremely bad. But it is the beginning of it. And, um, if you're adding more water to it, which you're not adding a huge amount, but you are adding more water. Um, you know, it could get worse over time. Just something to look at and it's not a huge problem, but it's just something to keep an eye on.
Thanks, Dave.
Question for, question for me. Is that down in the, um, is it when it gets back into the right of way or is it still, because I know, because Sherry's got a drain is a culvert as well, which is up the driveway that drain.
Before, it's before the culvert is what I saw. Yeah. It's before the driveway. It's just a little downstream. So it goes, it goes out the outfall. It kind of goes kitty corner towards the road. And then it goes towards the, um, drainage ditch and it's that little area before it gets to the drainage ditch along the road. Where I'm seeing a, I saw, I noticed a little bit of a channelization and erosion, but not a lot. That's what I was seeing.
Okay. We'll take a look at it.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Do we have any further public comments?
Got none.
I'm not seeing anything either.
Let's see if Sherry is, no, she's, I don't know if she's still with us or not.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the first public comment period. Um, it's now time for any further questions from the board. I will lead off. Uh, Will, could you, uh, address Lynn's comments about the, um, plant screening on the, on the, her side of the parking lot?
You're on mute, Will.
There we go. This plan is the same plan that, um, Michael worked out with the neighbors and Steve Wilson back a couple of years ago. So this is the screening that was proposed and, and she's right. It, it never happened and, uh, we're proposing to include it and make it happen now.
Okay. Anyone else on the board have any questions?
Ethan, the other thing I was going to just mention about that is that we don't have any, we don't have any proposed lights in that section of the parking lot.
Okay.
She was concerned about additional lighting and there's, there's no new proposed lights in that section.
Right. That whole, that whole grassy area that we saw is not being lit, right?
Right.
Right. Um, and, uh, since we're on the subject, uh, we also had Sherry asking about the plantings on the other side on her driveway. Uh, is it, is it correct that the plantings on the, on her side of the fence?
They are. They're between the, there's a retaining wall that has a fence on the top of it. And then the plantings are between the property line, her, and which is right at her driveway and the fence and wall.
Yeah. And did you see her note about, uh, potentially evergreens there? Was that her note?
No, that was Lynn's note.
Oh, that was Lynn's though. I got them crossed up. Okay. Thank you. Any other board members have any questions?
Um, Ethan, I just have a quick process question. I'm looking at Jeannie's, um, process agenda.
Yes.
And wondering that we've skipped a couple of steps of finding application as standing and such things, just to.
Oh, right. Incompleteness as well, right?
Yeah.
We, thank you for that.
Chris O.
Yep.
You also appointed six people to vote.
That was going to be my other question was, I don't think we're all, like, members.
Gosh, we haven't had six people forever. So I'm just used to having everybody in. Um, who is our standing alternate then at this moment?
I am.
Oh, it's you, Pat? Okay. So, um, let's, let's start, let's break for just a quick second and we'll try to repair some of the damage that I've done. And, um, and, and go over some of the process, uh, points. So the voting members for tonight will be Anita, Chris O, Andy, Mark Segenthaler and myself. We need to have a motion, uh, well, we need to find that the applicant has standing and the packet contains the deed. So I will move that the, we find, the board find that the applicant has standing to bring the application to the board. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Um, and we'll do a vote on that. So Anita.
Hi.
Andy. Chris O.
Hi.
Mark.
Sorry, yes.
And it's an eye for me. So we find the board finds that the applicant does have standing to bring the application. I will further make a motion that, um, relying on the testimony of Jeremy, the planning director and, um, the applicant, uh, as represented by Will Dartley, um, that the application is complete.
Second.
I have a second. So Anita.
Hi.
Andy. Chris O.
Hi.
And Mark. And that's an eye for me. So the board finds that the application is complete. Have I remedied all of our faults? You just jumped right into it. I think we've covered it. Chris, do you have anything else?
If you would just, um, add the plan that we need in the record, the date of the plan that you're reviewing.
Uh, as dated November 23, 2021?
Yep.
Okay.
Actually updated in 1214.
And updated 1214, 2021.
Revised submission list, January 5th, 2022.
Revised, January 5th, 2022. Do we need another vote on that, Jeannie, or is that, is that sufficient for you?
I'm going to amend your motion.
I think it's, I think it's fine. It's in the record what you're using to make your findings. That's all.
Okay. Thanks, Jeannie. Um, so back into where we are now that we've corrected those mistakes and my apologies for that. Um, we are into questions from the board still. If anybody has any further questions.
Not at this point.
Okay, seeing, okay, go ahead, Anita.
Yes, uh, we've heard from, uh, a budding residents on both sides of the property. Each of them, uh, expressing concern about the lighting. I want to first of all say it's great that, uh, Michael has shielded them as best he can. What I wanted to ask is can we, uh, require that those light, exterior lights be movement activated so that they're really only on when they're needed? Is that a possibility since this is a residence and they don't really want lights on? I don't want to be worried about that.
I don't think that's something that we can require, um, Anita. The only thing that we have here other than, you know, we have the performance standards that are, for lights that are required. Um, and that's a, that's an enforcement, you know, a performance standards issue. Um, so if there's an issue with the light escaping the property, then that's a, an issue for the code enforcement officer.
Okay.
Now, if he was proposing new lighting, you can make, make the new lighting, um, you know, make some conditions on new lighting, but I don't believe you're proposing any new lighting.
And we can certainly ask, I mean, Will, is the applicant willing to consider, uh, timed or motion sensitive lighting? I think you're muted again, Will.
Go ahead, Michael. Were you going to comment?
Yeah. Hey, this is Michael. I'm the applicant. Um,
Hi, Mike.
We, we, uh, we did put those lights on a timer. Um, they were, they were always on a timer, but they were going off late. And yet the last round of hearings when we did the talk, that's, we, we put the shields in and we adjusted the timers. The lights go off early. We did look at, you know, the request is made, you know, could we change the lights? And my response at the time was that I consider this building for better or worse, a historic preservation project. That, that's a, a subject to discussion. I guess whether MBNA is just to work or not, but I've been trying to preserve it. That's why you put these sort of internal shields in it.
Okay.
And if there is an issue, I mean, I, the code officer can handle it. Um, and the neighbors should, should reach out to the code officer and we'll investigate. And if there is dazzling stray light that is leaving the property, getting onto an abutting property owner, that applies to every. That applies to everyone in town, not just commercial buildings, just so everyone knows. We can certainly deal with that on the enforcement side. And again, I'm sure Mike would work with us to resolve it. Thanks, Ethan.
All right, yep. So I'm going to go ahead then and open up. Oh, go ahead. Is Crissow?
No.
It's Mark. Oh, it's Mark. Okay, yep.
I had a question, but I think I've, I've answered it in the meantime, but you know, my concern was when, when Dave talked about the oil. Was whether outside vehicle storage was actually permitted. But I think. There's no place in the ordinance that actually. Permits outside vehicle storage, but I think it would fall under the category of auto repair garages. So I think. I'm thinking that all works together. Is, is that the general consensus?
From a, from a code enforcement and a zoning perspective. We would certainly expect every, every, if someone wanted to build a new shop today. They're gonna have outdoor storage. You cannot expect any automobile repair shop or any facility to have. All of their storage of vehicles inside and we'd certainly look at as accessory to the business.
Right.
Yeah.
Does that, does that answer your question, Mark?
Well, it, yes, it did. I just. I'm good with that.
Okay. That, I guess, takes us, have we done the, we're now to the second round of public comments.
I see there is a, there is someone else in a, in a butter. I, I don't know if it's in a butter, someone from the public. Philip Gerard, I think lives in that area. I don't know if he wants to speak to this or not. Just throwing that out there. I see he joined the meeting.
Okay. Philip, if you're out there, if you'd like to comment, or are you just here to observe? You're on mute for what it's worth. Okay.
Philip is Sherry's husband.
Okay, perfect. Thanks, Jeannie. I thought so.
Assuming then that there are no, oh. I got it. We got a note from Philip. Sherry's computer went down, so now she's on his. And so then either Sherry or Philip, if you're there, if you had any further comment. That would be the time before we close off public comment. You will not be allowed to comment after that point.
And those would be different comments than you made already.
Right. Anything follow up? Hearing none. I'm gonna go ahead and close the second round of public comments. And now we get to go back to, to Will, if there's anything you wanted to address from the comments that you heard.
Nope, I'm all set.
Okay. Any final comments from the board before we go through the. Before we close the public hearing? Seeing none. Looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Okay, and Anita.
Hi. Close.
Andy. Crissow.
Hi.
And Mark.
Yes.
Okay, and it's an eye for me. The public hearing is closed. No further comments will be accepted. Now we get to move into the actual review of the performance standards.
Approval criteria.
I'm sorry, the criteria. And those criteria are found in the ordinance at section, in Article twelve, section six. Crissow, do you wanna take the lead on running through these or do you wanna go through them?
Well, I thought you'd read them out, like.
I can, I'm happy to read them out. The first criteria under section six.
That's what we've done.
Yeah, is preserve and enhance the landscape. The landscape shall be preserved in its natural state insofar as practical. By minimizing tree removal, disturbance of soil, and by retaining existing vegetation during construction. After construction is completed, landscaping shall be designed and planted to define, soften. Or screen the appearance of all screen parking areas from the public right of way and abutting properties and or structures. And minimize the encroachment of the proposed use on neighboring land uses. Any discussion?
I make a motion that the criteria on preserving enhancing landscape has been met according to the plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And the vote, Anita.
Hi.
Andy.
Hi.
Crissow.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
And it's an eye for me that. Criterion is satisfied. Number two is erosion control. Filling excavation and earth moving activities shall be carried out in a way that keeps erosion and sedimentation to a minimum, including. Preservation and protection of natural vegetation where possible. Keeping duration of exposure of disturbed soils so as to, to as short a period as possible and stabilizing disturbed soils as quickly as practicable. Use of temporary vegetation or mulching to protect exposed critical areas during development. Use of debris basin, sediment basin, silt traps and other acceptable methods to trap the sediment from stormwater runoff. No storage of fill materials within fifty feet of the banks of any stream intermittent or perennial or water, water body. And no removal of top slope in any lot, except for that removed from areas to be occupied by buildings, paving. Or other services that will not be revegetated. Discussion.
I would just like to throw out there that they did provide, sorry about this, on sheet, sheet C two. All the details, they're the standard details on erosion and sedimentation control.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Yeah. Part of the record that you included already.
I'm gonna make a motion that the criteria has been met. On erosion control with. Do you wanna put a, where did you made that motion? Something about the potential runoff erosion downstream. I don't know if we wanna put something in there.
A condition that the applicant works to address any downstream erosion.
Yeah, that's what I was. Wondering. So I make a motion that the criteria has been met for erosion control with condition that the applicant works with Department of Public Works in the town. To monitor downstream runoff and erosion.
Thank you. We have a second.
Seconded.
Thanks, Andy. Now we'll take a roll call vote. Anita.
Hi.
Andy.
Hi.
Crissow.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
And it's an eye for me. Criterion regarding erosion control is deemed satisfied. We're not having a new building. So number three probably does not apply. Any discussion?
For, for ease, you may wanna include that one and. Number ten, approval criteria, ten and number eleven. And twelve.
Right.
Or in your. That they're not applicable, just to kill many birds with one stone.
Yeah.
Wow.
Good.
I'll make a motion that criteria standards numbers four. Ten, eleven, twelve, or.
Three.
Sorry, three. I was like, three, ten, eleven and twelve are not applicable to this application.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yeah, you know, I, I don't know. I, I would recommend going through each criteria. All we have to do is say it's not applicable. And, and at least we've read them all and. And have done it properly.
I don't think it's improper, Mark, if we know that they aren't going to apply.
Would you want me to say what those sections are?
I, I. I gotta amend the motion to say that they're, they are not applicable because there is not, there are no, not new buildings. There is not a pier or wharf. For number ten, for eleven, there is not, again, new construction. And it's not in the BOZ.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Andy.
So on three, it talks about structures. Are the new fences considered structures or not?
Only in the short.
Okay.
Mark, does that motion now as, as red satisfy you or?
Sure, that's fine.
Okay. Does that mean you'd like to second that?
Sure, I'll second it.
Okay. Going around for a vote on that non. Lookability of the most of the sections, Anita.
Hi.
Andy.
Hi.
Crissow.
Hi.
And Mark.
Hi.
That's an eye for me. We can now move on to, that, that's a motion finding that. Three, ten, eleven and twelve do not apply to the application. Here's number four, vehicular access, parking and circulation. Proposed site layout should provide for safe access to and egress from the public and private roads. There is, any exit driveway shall be so designed as to provide the following minimum site distance measured in each direction. As measured from the point at which the driveway meets the public or private right of way. I will not read each individual number. The street serving the site shall be adequate to carry the anticipated traffic and the site plan shall locate points of access to avoid hazardous conflicts. With existing turning movements and traffic flows. And pedestrian ways shall be separated from vehicular traffic. We did have some. Sign offs from various department heads that may apply here. Those should be referenced in any motion. Is there any discussion on the parking?
Access and circulation.
I make a motion that the applicant has met the criteria. As testified by sign off from the fire chief and public works.
Seconded.
Thank you, Andy.
And, and chief of, I knew there was a third one. Thank you, Jeannie.
We have a motion and a second to a roll call vote. Anita.
Hi.
Crissow.
Hi.
Andy.
Hi.
And Mark.
Hi.
It's an eye for me. The parking access and circulation. Criterion met. Number five. Surface water drainage.
This is where you may wanna.
Yeah.
Issues.
Not the oil.
Yeah.
Yep. So adequate provision shall be made for surface drainage so that removal of storm waters will not have an unreasonably adverse effect on neighboring properties, downstream water quality. Soil erosion or the public storm drain system. Whenever possible, onsite absorption of runoff water shall be used to minimize discharges from the site. Drainage facilities shall be designed for twenty-five years form frequency. And I will. Remind the board that we heard testimony from Dave regarding the. Interior drains. And whether they're going into the sewer as they should, or whether they. Are hitting into the stormwater drainage, which they should not. And the functionality of the oil water separator within the building. So we should probably consider. A condition that those matters be sorted out.
Would. I think with, with the next one is public utilities. So the interior water. Would that be a separate one on public utilities that's in sewer water?
Well, I think you need to include it here. I mean, there's the potential that there are. Some of those drains potentially getting into the storm system that gets.
Right, no, I, there's, I'm just saying there's both.
Yeah.
Right, and we might need to do it on both, Crissow.
Yeah.
But I, I think that's the proper way to handle it because I think Dave was saying that he wasn't sure. That it wasn't coming from the street, but he, you know, we don't know for sure if it's, it's more likely it's coming from inside possibly.
So we'll make a motion that the applicant has met the condition, criteria, condition on proving that the. Internal. Drains are going into sewer and proper oil separation. Is in place.
Using BMPs.
Exactly.
And, and maintained.
To the satisfaction, that's the code enforcement officer, correct, Jeremy?
Yeah, and wastewater. I mean, you know, Dave, you both, you handles the wastewater. It's probably some treat, pre-treatment that he needs to have done here and. So I think he's just gotta comply with all applicable plumbing and wastewater sewer requirements.
Okay, so added. Do we have a second on that one?
Seconded.
Jeannie, did you get enough of that?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Thank you. Good motion, I thought.
Nice.
We, we work well together.
Anita.
Hi.
Andy.
Hi.
Crissow.
Hi.
Mark Segenthaler.
Hi.
And that's an eye from me. Now on to public utilities. The development shall not impose an unreasonable burden. On sewers and storm drains, water lines or other public utilities. New utilities shall be sized and existing utilities upgraded to adequately handle the lands of the development. Any discussion?
Just to show you know, this standard from my perspective is more about quantity and not quality of downstream or impact. So. If you wanna include that same motion, you can. I don't think it's necessary on this one because the way I read that. It's about quantity of water, not quality.
Okay, Anita's got her, got her hand up.
Yeah. We're, we're at an inflection point. Like other places in the country, we're getting more and more. Rain and bigger storms and heavier downpours. We had seven inches fall overnight. Not so long ago around Halloween, I believe it was. Which calls for a change. Or an updating of our rules. So when the phraseology is adequate to handle. Rainstorms or adequate to handle twenty-five year storms. That's becoming an outmoded phraseology and presently we are still proceeding with. That phraseology and. Not really, I, I just, I, obviously we can't change rules like that during this hearing. But, but you are asking, is it adequate? And I don't think we even know what adequate is anymore. And I'm just wondering what the planning board has to say about that.
Well, I would say you're right that we can't really address that at this hearing. But the. The, the only thing we can hold the applicant to is what the standards are at the time of the application.
Yeah.
And when it's being considered. So if any, any issues that we might wanna address with. The. You know, how. How up to date those standards are and whether they're looking forward enough have to be addressed in another forum.
So I, I just wanted to mention, like, put a B in Jeremy's bonnet, or at least. If we could discuss as a planning board. This is, this is a reminder opportunity and we don't. This is, this is a reminder opportunity and we don't think about it unless we have reminder opportunities like this.
And I hear you on that absolutely.
If he could just um tell us later. Um, how we're going to address questions like this so that the next applicant, you know, how we're going to handle this.
Yeah, and there is, there is the flood resiliency project going on, right? You know, the committee that's working on that. Um, and that type of issue would definitely come up in that discussion. Um, and it's not an immediate fix, there's no question. Um, I don't see the urgency on this particular. Uh, issue. I do long term for sure, um, but but on this application, this issue, so. Be planted in your bonnet, Jeremy, you.
No, it's it's planted in my bonnet and I think I'm going to probably reach out to Dave and some other engineers around and I've looked at other ordinances and see what's more. Appropriate. If I can do something very quickly and have something to fix this, and I I agree, a 25 year storm event is not the type of storm event that we should be. Sizing these things for. So if I can quickly get to a a good number. It's probably not 100 year storm event, but a 50 is probably better, but I don't know. I'll work with Dave and and some other engineers. If I can quickly come up with one, you'll have a hearing. You'll have an ordinance amendment for this to bring the, you know, on the 14th. How's that? Okay.
See buzzing bees doing their job. Anybody else have comments?
I feel that this is uh really not. Not applicable. Because it's not, we're not talking about discussing addition of any public utilities. We've already, we've already addressed the stormwater drainage issues in the previous motion.
I can see that. Um, the only thing is it does include language on storm drains. And so.
And existing utilities.
And it is, it is under public utilities, uh, and.
We're at number six, right?
Yeah. It's public utilities, but it does list storm drains. As one of the utilities. And so I think that just to cover our bases, we ought to consider it.
Isn't there a new catch basin on this?
There is.
Yes. So so that would be something new, right?
That would qualify, sure.
Right. That's the, that's the upgrading, the upgrading existing utilities component.
Oh. Okay.
That's how I read it. Um, but I don't think we need, I think that we've sort of covered erosion and. The oil issues in other conditions. So I will simply make a motion that. The public utilities criteria has been met in the plan.
Seconded.
Okay. Uh, local vote, Anita. Mark.
Hi.
Chris O.
Hi.
Andy.
Hi.
It's an eye from me. Number six, public utilities deemed satisfied. Seven, special features of development. Exposed storage areas. Exposed machinery installation, service areas, truck loading areas, utility buildings. And similar structures shall have setbacks and screening to provide a buffer to sight and sound sufficient to minimize. Their adverse impact on other land uses within the development area and on surrounding properties. Any discussion?
I'll make a motion that the applicant has met the criteria on special features of development.
Seconded.
Okay, Anita. Mark.
Hi.
Andy.
Hi.
Chris O.
Hi.
It's an eye from me. Criterion seven on special features deemed satisfied. Uh, eight, exterior lighting. Um, all exterior lighting shall be designed and shielded to avoid undue adverse impact on neighboring properties and rights of way. Um, I guess we left this in there because exterior lighting did come up in the. Um, public comment period. My understanding is there is no new lighting proposed for this project. Um, so any enforcement. Issues with the existing lighting would be up to the code enforcement officer. And the planning director. So I'm not sure this one even applies, but um.
Yeah. Uh, I'll make a motion that criteria eight on exterior lighting does not apply. To the fact that there is no additional lighting as part of this plan.
I wonder if you could acknowledge the fact that Mike is voluntarily. Um, tried to improve the situation after hearing comments last time. I I don't know. It's up to you, but seems like it should be acknowledged.
Um, well, I feel like we have acknowledged it, um, but it's not really a part of the motion or the the application.
Not yet.
Because there's no, no uh new lighting composed. Um, but I will, I will extend. Um, a thank you to Mike for being willing to address those issues with the neighbors and hopefully. Any further issues can be addressed in the same manner.
I I have a question, Ethan, so.
Yes, Andy.
So this doesn't talk about new lighting. It just says exterior lighting should be designed and shielded, right? So. The public comment was that a couple of lights weren't properly shielded, correct?
But there's, there's no lighting in this application.
Okay.
There's no, they're like, there are no lights at being added as part of this design application. It's the lighting is existing.
You could, you could add, you could add something that the light, this section doesn't apply and acknowledge that um. The code enforcement office will work with um abutting property owners and the property owner to address, to ensure compliance with the town's performance standards on lighting or on glare. That.
Sure, that sounds good. I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Yeah, sorry, I'm just.
The uh, a move that the uh criteria number eight exterior lighting uh does not apply. But acknowledging the public comments received from the abutting neighbors regarding uh. Exterior lighting already existing on the property and um the planning director, the code enforcement officer will work with the abutters and the property owner. To ensure that all lighting on the property meets the performance standards of our lighting ordinance.
Second.
Thank you. Anita. Mark.
Hi.
Chris O.
Hi.
Andy.
Hi.
It's an eye from me. Criteria number eight exterior lighting. Does not apply. Um, number nine, emergency vehicle access. Provision shall be made for convenient and safe emergency vehicle access to all buildings and structures at all times of the year, including 20 foot wide fire lanes. At locations as may be recommended by the fire department, and I will remind the board and refer you to the. Um, sign offs received from the fire department and chief of police.
Uh, make a motion that the criterion on emergency vehicle access has been met as supported by the statements from. Chief of police and fire chief.
Seconded.
Thank you, Andy. Uh, Anita. Mark.
Hi.
Uh, Andy.
Hi.
Chris O.
Hi.
And that's an eye from me. Motion. Carries. And criteria number nine deemed. Satisfied. We have 10, 11, and 12 are on the not applicable list. So I think that. That wraps up the review of the criterion.
Can I throw something into this mix really quick and maybe if you can do it as part of a condition um at the final approval? Um, that would again include the condition on the oil water separator and making sure those drains are separate. But also to ask the applicant to um maintain the, I mean, just identifying when Will and I were out there, we identified. You know, that admitting the sand in the in the outfall. Um, can we just ask that he? Make a condition that he maintain his existing infrastructure so that that means cleaning out those cash basins when necessary and just doing routine maintenance? That okay?
And we vote on that to make it clear uh whether or not we agree with that. I think that's an important. Um, very important for all property owners to do and.
I mean, the town's trying to do it now with our cash basis, you know, I mean, it's, it's a significant issue all all over, all over town.
Yeah, that um. That property owners can receive a lot of damage if the uphill property owner isn't maintaining a catch basin in there on their property.
Mike or Will problem how I did that?
What was that, Jeremy?
Do you have a problem with doing that, making that a condition? Or how I handled that?
No, I think what's unique about this situation is that you've got.
I know some towns.
Storm drains jumping into private and then back up to municipal, but.
Yeah. So maybe we'll work with the town, Mike will work with the town to maintain those basins that are. In the public and and impacted by his. Maybe Dave want to come in?
Ours are on an annual maintenance cycle right now. They're being done annually. So almost a $40,000 uh cost to the town to maintain those. So if yours aren't being maintained. They're making it more difficult for us to maintain the ones we're maintaining. Um, they all need to be maintained, right? Ultimately.
Do you maintain the ones out here in the front?
What the best thing to do would be, I mean, we can work together, but when we go and do our, our um cycle. We probably should do um. Those ones in that location also. It's probably the, to the benefit of the property owner because the person's already there. Um, but that's, you know, I mean, I think just putting a BMP in to maintain your. Your pollution control device, which is a catch basin is probably uh proper. I mean, it.
Yeah.
It's easy not to do, you know, I mean, we we've been neglecting ours all around town and it, it does have a pretty negative effect. I mean, there's no sump in anything. So I can't, so I. You know, and I think the other thing too is once you get into a cycle. They don't have to be done every year. You know, you'll end up determining frequency based on sticking the sump and seeing what's in the bottom and. Uh, if they need to be done, it's just part of your BMP of your parking lot. You know, I don't have any leaky vehicles. My sump is. Uh, half full. I need to clean it and I need to make sure I'm capturing any residual, you know, oil or contaminants before it reaches the storm drain. That's just a normal BMP in a parking lot for, for any kind of, I mean, there's no license required here for that kind of thing, but that's just a BMP.
Maybe just make the condition that he does routine maintenance on existing cash bases on the property.
Yeah, it sounds reasonable.
I don't really have clarity, maybe uh Mr. Mullins does on who? Who is responsible? These cash basins, as you mentioned, that are on private property and then they go back to public and. And so you, so you lift the the grate and you see a lot of sand. Is it up to the property owner to get down there with the shovel? I mean, I I as a, as a towns person don't really understand the relative responsibilities for such things. And.
It is interesting here, Anita. I will say if you look at the plan, there are three catch basins, three or two. Um, two catch basins immediately in front of this property that are within the town right away. So those are getting, that's getting town flow plus plus parking lot flow. So I think on those. You know, Mike and Dave should together to figure out how to maintain those. Um, again, it's probably just. Cost sharing on on those because some of yours does go to that, Mike, but. Um, those are me, those are in the town right away and how those happened, I don't know who installed them. It probably got called way back then. Uh, but it is in town right away and does receive town, town surface water.
Am I allowed to to uh speak here? Yeah, um, but you know, N B and A built this facility. I'm assuming that they probably. Installed the drainage at that time. And if you look at, you know, where the right of way is within the, where the road is within the right of way. The road's way in the middle of it. Uh, you can logically infer that. You know, when they attach their parking apron to the road, you know, that they were the one doing the construction. I, I think if. We're going through a permitting process and so there's a discussion right now about permitting and standards for construction. But I know that the town separately does have standards for like performance standards for lighting. Right? Which can apply as I mentioned, as Jeremy mentioned by the code officer at any time. So I have seen like maintenance ordinances, for example, some towns require you to to mow your lawn. And if you don't, you could be cited. I'm not, not proposing that here, but. I would, I'd be surprised if Camden didn't somewhere address issues of maintenance. What I would say is that. This property now is 20, 25 years old and there's no evident sign. That the basins aren't adequate in terms of handling the flow. Like, we don't see like an area where the pavement of the street has been undermined. Because there's regular runoff beyond it. I think they're doing their jobs with that respect. I I mean, I try to maintain them and and I just in my own house in Rockland, I installed a series of basins there and in a ditch to try to improve that. And I think that. The idea there is that that's usually considered a a positive to eliminate a ditch with one of these systems, which are easier to control. But like everyone else, I mean, I. I don't want to see adverse consequences from. Outflow. And there are definitely ways that Camden could be a leader in terms of dealing with both. You know, quantities of storm water and combined flows, which means sewer and and storm water. As well as the quality, meaning, you know, treatment and things like that. And I think. This is a great time to talk about it and I'd be happy to uh participate in that.
Thanks, Mike. Any board discussion, any further board discussion on this issue? How do you feel about adding any condition for BMPs for maintenance of the catch base? Anita, you're nodding your head. You want to make that motion?
Uh. Sure, I moved that the BMP be uh. An additional. Uh, requirement of the cash basins. Is that what you're said?
I couldn't hear you. I don't know about others, but.
I think to require routine maintenance of um cash basins.
Thank you. So so moved.
But it's a condition of our final motion. Is that what we're doing?
That was my thought. Yes, Chris O. So you want to go with a full on, full on a motion to include the two conditions. Go ahead.
Uh, well, we could make, I'll make a motion that relying on the testimony of the applicant. With written and oral and the testimony of Director of Planning and Development. The revisions to the site plan for Transport LLC for property located at 100 Mount Batty Street. As shown on C1 dated November 23rd, 2021 are approved with. The conditions of. We installing BMPs and. Regular maintenance in coordination with the town public works.
Could include in the final, the the motion that we made or or just the condition on the um interior floor drains. As referenced previously.
And that the interior floor drains are not connected to the wastewater. System. Is that what you're saying?
Connected to the stormwater system.
Or water.
Not connected and are permitted. Uh, through the code office and the wastewater treatment plant sewer department.
Exactly.
Just like that.
There's another one, though.
Uh-oh.
Monitoring and control erosion.
All right. Thank you.
Do you want to add that there, Chris? So monitor and control erosion.
Yeah, that. And that mon, and that erosion of the storm drains will be monitored and maintained.
Erosion downstream of the storm drains.
Exactly.
Or are we talking about erosion during construction here?
No, this is ongoing, ongoing erosion that may happen downstream is apparently there's erosion a little bit further beyond than where I'd looked previously along with Will.
This is ongoing.
Yeah.
It started out so clean, Chris. Do we have a second?
When, when you write by committee?
Second.
Okay, Anita seconded. Okay. We'll call vote for approval of the application subject to conditions. Anita.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Andy.
Hi.
Chris.
Hi.
And it's an eye for me. The motion passes and the application is approved. Thank you, Will. Thank you, Michael, for your time. Thank you, Dave, for coming out, help having you here to explain that issue with the, the drainage. And thanks to all who gave public comment.
Yeah, thank you, everyone.
All right, on to the next one.
On to the next one. We are now on to the site plan. Review. Under Article 12. Proposals to construct, enlarge and extend piers, consolidated piers, causeways. Marines bridges over 20 feet in length and uses projecting into water bodies. Can be found under section three, site plan content and four approval criteria. The applicants are John Rixon and Mary Kelly, 26 Harbor Road. And Will Gartley is again the representative for this project. First, I need to. Go through whether anybody has a bias or conflict of interest in this project. Chris.
Uh, no.
Mark.
No.
Andy.
No.
Anita.
No.
And no conflict of interest or bias on my part on this one either. We had five members present at the sidewalk. We had Andy, Chris, so Mark. Pat, myself. And Anita attended somewhat virtually via phone. Those will be voting tonight include myself, Chris, so Andy, Mark and Anita. And the procedure for the public hearings will be the same as the one that I read before, but I'll just run over it real quickly. When I pull it up. We will start with the applicant's presentation. Then we will have questions from the board. We will open for the first round of public comments. If you intend to comment as a member of the public, please state your name and residence for the record. And we will have, we will close that public comment period, have questions from the board. We will then open for a second round of public comments. We will, if any, we will close that portion and at that, after that point, no further public comments will be accepted. Then we will have any further comments from the applicant and final comments from the board, at which point we will then. Motion to vote to close the public hearing. And we'll move into review of the criteria. So right now we're, go ahead, Jeremy.
Ethan, I just want to remind you though, that we did talk about the approval criteria, but there are other review standards in the shoreline zoning ordinance.
Right, yeah, I was lumping them together, but I hear you.
I, for the rest of, you didn't include them as the approval criteria, so I was throwing that.
Yeah, we'll be looking at review of Article 10 Performance Standards for Piers. Part one, section one, eight B ordinance pages X. Seven and eight. And then we will also be looking at the review of the site plan approval criteria from section six.
I have a question, Ethan.
Go ahead, Andy.
So on section eight. Which is applicable to piers, docks, walls, bridges, et cetera. Why is the general sta, why are the general standards not included as part of the review?
I believe they are.
Yeah, I would say they are.
Okay, well, it skipped to. Eight B.
No.
Okay, so the general.
Put it in there.
Okay.
When you say it skipped, what are we talking about?
I was looking in the application on page.
The applicant's packet?
Yeah. Is it page 111? It goes.
Yeah, I mean, it's, that's a tough one. Performance standards are always a funny, a funny thing to try to navigate how to, because they're kind of. You know, they apply always whether or not someone is doing them or not, so, or whether it's coming before you or not. I think we've reviewed these prior. And I think we'll address them. You know, you can go through them. I, I think it's appropriate to go through all, through eight A if you'd like. No.
I was just curious whether it was applicable or not and.
No, they're, they're applicable.
Okay.
Some of them just don't apply as much, but go ahead.
Jeremy, the other, the other thing is they're actually a duplication of the standards that are in the.
In the harbor ordinance.
In the harbor ordinance. So I did address them. It just, I didn't label it under this section. I did it under the harbor ordinance.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, Will.
All right, Ethan, you can maybe let Will, Will go.
Yep, now it's up to Will. I'll give you the floor to lay out this project for us.
Thank you.
Could you do standing and completeness, please?
Oh gosh, Jeannie, thank you. I thought I covered everything and here I did not.
I was right there for you, Jeannie.
Okay, Chris, go ahead.
Well, you have to find that he has standing.
Yeah, well, based on the application and the deed included therein, I find that the applicant has standing.
I'll make a motion to rely on the testimony of the Director of Planning and Development. And listing of the applicant's submissions as outlined in the application narrative dated January 5th, 2022. To find that Article 12, sections three and four have been satisfied.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Anita. And vote, Chris.
Hi.
Andy.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Anita.
Hi.
And it's an eye from me. The board finds that the applicant does have standing and has filed a complete application. Now, I think I can turn this over to Will for his.
Yeah, I got one more. I'll make a motion. The plan under review consists of the submission packet dated January 5th. Which includes, January 5th, 2022, which includes site plan C1 dated January 5th, 2022 and other submissions as noted above.
You really are trying to get on Jeannie's good side. Nice job, Chris.
I'm, I'm a Roberts Rules fan. I, I, I.
Just. I've been waiting for you for 20 years.
Yeah, she thought, she thought she had it in me, but she, she, she swung and missed.
I'm waiting for my cake. I'm waiting for the rum cake, all right?
Okay, do we get a second that I didn't hear because we were all laughing?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Anita. And vote.
Hi.
Andy.
Hi.
Chris.
Hi.
Anita.
Hi.
It's an eye from me. Okay, I'm gonna take a breath for a second to give Chris a one more second to make sure all his i's are dotted and t's are crossed. Thank you, Chris. So I really do appreciate it, keeping us on the straight and narrow. And I know Jeannie does. Now, Will, I will turn it over to you for your introduction of the project to the board.
All right, thank you. So for this project, I'm representing John Rixon and Mary Kelly, 26 Harbor Road. And their proposal for a new residential pier structure gangway and float. The total length of the structure from where it leaves land. Out to the end of the permanent portion of the big structure is 106 feet. 86 feet from mean high water. Ordinance requirement is 100 feet, so we're well within what the ordinance allows. We've got two fixed granite piles that are going to support the permanent structure and a three foot by 45 foot aluminum ramp. And a 12 by 20 float. Since we last spoke, we've received permits from both the DEP and the Army Corps of Engineers. We also received back the comments from inland fisheries and wildlife and main department of marine resources. I've included all of that in the application package. I also included cut sheets. We talked a little bit last time about lights. And they do propose to have some lights on the post as you go out. They're low level. Sconce type lights, they're brass and they sit just a little bit below the cap of the post. They're the same lights that the brace pier, which is next door, a little bit to the south have on their pier. So I know you've gotten comments back from Steve regarding the mornings and the sidewalk. It was good. We were there just about low tide. So everybody could see the length of the pier and where the low water was and. Otherwise, I think everything is pretty straightforward and we tried to respond to everything in the ordinance.
Will, do you want to share your screen maybe?
Sure. Is it there or is it spinning?
It's there.
I see it.
Okay. Jeremy, is there something specific you were hoping I was going to point out or?
No, I just, I just, for those people that may be watching on YouTube or, or just, you know, so they know what we're talking about and where this is.
I'll just briefly go through that again. This is the permanent portion of the structure. These are the granite cribs that will support it. And low water hits right about here, just out beyond the end of the permanent structure. And we have the gangway and float. We kind of show, you know, the different angles that the gang will be at high water and low water.
Thanks, Will.
Oh, I have a question. Can I ask that now?
Sure, Pat.
Um, when we were at the sidewalk, there was talk about the work on the hill part that was going to happen. And Jeremy, you were saying that they'll need an erosion control plan for that and the planning board would review that. But I, is that something that we would get later or was that part this?
No, you don't actually, yeah, that's not part of this right now. At all. They're just asking for the approval and I think Will talked about that the last time, that this, all this work's really done from. You know, the seaside and not land. And I, and I wanted to clarify because. I thought. I thought that then, and Will, I'm sorry, but I, I went through the stand, the site plan review section. And it doesn't say erosion control project. I thought it did, so that is something that he gets permitted through the code office or through, you know, planning and development office and the DEP. That does not.
I think the details are on C2. Civil details. I'm not sure.
We have some details there for erosion control in the area where we're, we're building the stairs on the site. Right. But what we talked about at the sidewalk is that we, we are going to be, and we're working on it now. Plans for additional development on this site, which is going to include stabilizing that slope and revegetating. And so we will be providing those plans to Jeremy.
Which is not part of your purview, Pat. That's, you guys are looking at the pier.
Right, and this doesn't even come to us down the line. Is that correct, Jeremy?
That's correct.
Yeah, the erosion, the erosion stuff is all going to be handled through the code office.
Correct.
And the DEP.
Oh, I see. Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Pat. Anyone else have any questions? Go ahead, Andy.
I've kind of a question and a comment. If you could just zoom in on the site elevation that will of the pier. You know, last time we talked about the pier and kind of the clearance under it. I think it was like three feet between the. You know, the mean high water and the bottom of the pier. It wasn't enough water to kayak under, right? And there was, you know, comments were made about access for kayaking. And, you know, it being very difficult, especially for small children to do that when the tide was in. And, you know, one of the things that was talked about at some point, I can't remember if it was the last, you know, the pre-application or the site walk. Was that the pier at the highest astronomical tide is going to be underwater, right? Is that a true statement, Will?
Well, the, so on, it's, I've kind of blown in here. So the top of the pier is six feet above mean high water.
Right.
And which is all that the town's ordinance allows.
Right.
And so the highest annual tide is this heavy blue line here. And that elevation at this location is, what's the number? It's 12.4. And mean high water is 9.9. So basically it's two and a, almost two and a half feet. Difference between mean high water and the highest annual tide. And that highest annual tide elevation doesn't include any sort of storm surge or wave action.
Right.
So I'd be surprised if this whole thing were underwater, but the underside of these timbers will definitely experience wave action and surge. At different storms. There's no doubt about it. At, at mean high water, we've got six feet, the timbers are two feet. So there is four feet. Below the underside of those timbers and the mean high water level. So, you know, at, at high tide. I think you could go onto there. It might feel a little tight. A mid tide out in this area, you could certainly go through. But as you saw during the sidewalk too, there's a lot of boulders in that area too, so. It might be a little tricky to navigate through.
Right, so, so where I was going with this, and I don't know if it's appropriate, is, you know, given what we know about. You know, the, the idea that the tides are only going to get higher and not lower. And, and the talk of, you know, raising piers to accommodate that. I, I, I'm wondering if it makes sense to, you know, to raise this pier to give better access for kayakers. And mitigate this risk in the future of, you know, the pier being underwater. So that's.
Our ordinance won't allow it.
Yeah, I think that's what it is. We're, we're in that situation again that we face with the Marina application where. It might make sense to raise something to accommodate sea level rise, but the ordinance is written such that they can only go to six feet. Correct, Will?
That's correct.
Yep, so we'd be looking at an ordinance change and the delays that go with that. It certainly is something that can be considered, but I, I, I think we're gonna. Look at this as an application coming in as the ordinance is the time it was written, you know, the time the application came in. If the applicant wants to move forward, if the applicant is concerned about their pier being underwater. Or, you know, the passing of the. The kayakers. I mean, from my perspective, this is sort of a non-issue. It really seems like the kayaker is just going to go. It really seems like the kayaker is just gonna go around this, this pier, it's not that far. This is not a 300 foot pier extending out into the water. Um, when you look at it, you know, when, when we saw this site visit, when I, when I looked at it, was struck by the fact that it, it's not as long as, some piers we see are, are, you know, much shallower water. Um, extend way out. Um, this one really does not go out as far. Um, but.
Yeah.
More discussion from the board.
Yeah, I was thinking more from the perspective, you know, of, of little kids, you know. I, I've got a, a fourth grader who was kayaking when she was, uh, in first grade and, you know, she didn't like to stray too far from the shore, so, um, you know, that, that's the perspective I'm looking through. Um, and, and it just felt like it would, you know, if, if nothing is done to raise it, then it feels like it's interfering with navigation, so.
Go ahead, Anita.
Uh, well, a comment and a question. Uh, the comment, uh, is, um, I'm not, I'm not clear on why a kayaker couldn't go under the moving, the moving section of the ramp that goes up and down with, with the water levels, uh, where it attaches to the dock, which gives another, uh, foot at least of clearance, uh, right there. The, the question is, is more global and it relates to, uh, when private property owners and businesses experience, experience damage as a result of high water. Uh, the high water of, of sea water, sea level rise. Is there any, i- is this, is that something where the town steps in to help the property owner with regard to their damages, or is the property owner totally on his or her own uh, to resolve any issues that happen, uh, due to that problem on their property?
I can't see how the town would be involved, anyone else, I mean?
Yeah, they're on, they're on their own.
It's, it's totally private, like, I, I, I can just tell you um, from dealing with, from a few people who've dealt with this in recent storms, like, no, you might get some FEMA money, you might get some insurance money, but the town's not on the hook and, and increasingly, insurance is not covering. So it's just on the homeowner's situation. It's something that we need to look at, raising these levels, because it's, it's restrictive of lots of things. But there's nothing right now that can be done.
So would I be correct in understanding the comments previously that there is actually a, a limitation as to how high they can go at this time? Um, so, so our town rules are preventing them from planning for the future higher level of the water? So that just gives us another reason.
Not just the zoning ordinance, but the harbor ordinance.
The harbor ordinance, this is.
And that's also something that the town.
Would have happily gone higher, but they couldn't.
Yeah, so that's something the town is also working quickly to resolve.
Yeah, trying, Anita. Um, I mean, I know Will is, is working on a project and, um, he's, he's drafted some, some changes that I think could help. Um, so.
On, on this issue, just to, just simply changing it to be six feet above the highest annual tide opposed to the mean high water would make a big difference and go a long way to protecting some of these structures.
Right, but if I, if I could, we're getting pretty far off the, uh.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I think, I thank you, Crystal, but I do think it's pertinent, Will, to ask if the applicant, uh, would rather wait for that ordinance type adjustment if there's, you know, a sentiment on the board that we'd be willing to, to move that forward. Um, or if they're really, if they'd rather run the risk of going forward under the ordinance as currently written. And it's a question that we didn't put quite as, um, pointedly to Lyman Morris, but I understand that there are, you know, reasons to move forward now and there might be, you know, reasons to wait.
Well, I think the one big difference between this and Lyman Morris is that, that if the ordinance changes and this could go up a foot or two feet, that would make a difference. It wouldn't be that difficult to lift it and do that. Whereas with Lyman Morris, you know, that's, it's a done deal, they're not gonna lift all the buildings. So I think, um, you know, with no guarantee on how quickly that might happen, the ordinance change, I, I think the preference here would be to, to get our permit for what we're allowed to do and then adjust accordingly down the road if, when it becomes possible, if, if it's deemed necessary.
Yep, okay. Does that satisfy your interest on that, Anita?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for the applicant? From the board? Seeing none, I'm going to now go ahead and open the hearing to public comment. Um, Jeremy, do we have any public comment on this one?
I, I, well, I've got three comments to read. Um, I do note that John Rixon is, is here, so he's, he is here, the owner of the property, but, um, and I've sent these to you before, uh, I'll just read it into the record. Jack Sanford, John Rixon and Mary Kelly have been a welcome addition to our neighborhood and so too will their new pier. As close neighbors on Harbor Road, we urge the planning board to approve their pier application. That's from Jack Sanford. Uh, and then we've got, um, Carla, uh, uh, forgive me if I pronounce her name wrong, Dormus Tranfield and Richard Tranfield at 22 Harbor Road. Uh, we are abutters who live at 22 Harbor Road. We have reviewed the subject site and drawings and are writing to indicate that we support the project. We appreciate that the pier gangways and floats will be constructed in a manner which will have minimal impact on navigation and the environment and is consistent with the existing Camden ordinances. Thank you for your thorough review and consideration, Carla and Richard Tranfield. And then, uh, just for the record, I do have Steve Pixley, I shared that with you all. Um, I had a comment to the harbor committee as well. Um, after looking at the proposed pier location, uh, regardless of Dorski, it looks like only one mooring may have to be moved. I will contact the mooring holder and inform them of this possible move. Since it is so, and then, so that was, you had a question about existing moorings and
Yep.
moorings. And so since it is so shallow where the float is going, uh, to be, it doesn't look like it will affect any future mooring use of that area, and that's from Harbor Master Steve Pixley. You guys asked for that at the meet, at last.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any other public comment? Jeremy, you wanna check your various sources?
I'll check. I don't see any.
Okay.
Okay. I will go ahead then and close the first public comment period. And go back to, uh, the applicant, if there's any comments you want to add, Will?
Oh, I think we've covered everything.
Okay, John, anything that you wanted to add? You don't have to speak, just giving you an opportunity.
No, I just appreciate the, uh, time and consideration, thank you.
Sure. Um, final comments from the board on this project? Before we go into deliberation.
I, I have a question, a question for you, Will. Um, the, the width is five feet on the plan. And on the, uh, where is it, the DEP approval? It's, uh, six feet?
Yeah, the rea- the reason for that, Mark, is that if you look at that typical pier section that I just kind of zoomed in on, I think the six feet for them is just a roundup, but the in, inside width is five and then we've got the post to the outside, which is 5'8". But they, they've got the same plan that you do, so I'm not sure why they listed it that way in their permit.
Are they counting the concrete, uh, the outer dimension of the concrete piers?
No, because those get wider from the, they taper from top to bottom. So, I mean, that, the typical pier section is, is pretty detailed showing how that's gonna be constructed and what the width is going to be.
Okay, that's all, I mean, I, I just, I looked up the harbor ordinance and it, uh, uh, it's six feet is the, the maximum width.
Right.
And I just, I, for some reason, I thought it was five, so it is six feet and I just making sure.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Someone, uh, correct me, did we do, we just did one round of public comment, is that correct, or did we do two?
You did one.
That's what I thought. Um, so we will now go ahead and open for the second round of public comment. Um, if anybody wants to offer new testimony, um, not repeating something that's already been heard. Um, we're open to hearing public comments after this period is closed, there will be no further public comment on this project. I'm looking around. Jeremy, you don't have anything?
Nope.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close the second public comment period. Um, I did kind of skip around there, sorry about that, so we had comments from the applicant, I think they're all set. Um, and then any final comments from the board before we move into final deliberation?
Um, I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
Just, uh, I don't know if you have the details on it, I'm just curious about the removable lifting gallows, what's, how does that operate or store? I mean, it's, it's, again, it's about the height restriction, so.
Right, right.
Um, just something that we did notice when we were there, that the neighbor ha- has theirs permit, has one up just so that it's easy to use and not be to main, to be in compliant.
Right, if they decided to put those on, typically what happens when they're removable is there's a, a bracket to the outside, like where the last post is shown.
Mm-hmm.
And it's a sleeve, so they just create a, a steel sleeve that the post sat down in, use it, and then take, slide them back out.
Waste the gangway and gone, okay.
Yep. But it may, so it may be that they just have whoever handles the float remove the, the gangway and don't end up putting the gallows in, so not every project, uh, they put them in.
Yeah, and depending on the tide, they may not even need to use, they.
Right.
And aren't they removable, uh, so they can comply with the temporary restru- uh, structure requirement, is that part of it?
Well, because there's a height, there's a height restriction in the ordinance
Okay.
also, which I would love to see addressed a little bit, but, yeah. It can't be permanent.
That was awful.
Thank you. Okay, um, we need a motion and vote then to close the public hearing? I'll move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. Andy?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Crystal?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
And it's an eye from me. We are closing the public hearing, no further comment on the application will be accepted. Um, we do have the option to determine, uh, which criteria do not apply to this application and make an all-inclusive motion. Has anyone done the legwork on that?
Yeah, but do we need to go through the, uh, harbor performance standards first?
I don't think it matters which one you go through first.
Okay.
I tried in a, in a, what I sent out to you, um, earlier, I tried to kind of give you a heads up which ones I thought were not applicable.
I had, I had four, six, seven, nine, 11, and 12.
Yep.
That sounds right to me.
I mean, I left, I left stormwater in there just because, you know, um, but I think that makes sense. That was a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that standards four, six, seven, nine, 11, and 12 are not applicable to this application.
You want?
That's of the site plan review?
Yeah.
Yes.
You want to at least explain, going back to Mark's, um, interest in this?
Yeah, I was gonna, uh, that there is no vehicular access, there are no public utilities, there are no special features of development. There's no vehicular access, so emergency vehicle access is not applicable. And it's not B1, the B1 or BOZ zones.
Perfect. Thank you.
I still wanna register my concern about not going through each standard individually.
Okay, um.
Can we get Will to stop sharing his screen?
Sure.
Thank you.
What does the board feel about Mark's concerns? Are you okay, uh, going through each individual one and deciding it doesn't apply at the time? Or do you want to do the blanket motion that is proposed?
I would support going through them one at a time.
I'm happy with a blanket motion.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think we need to go through them if someone is curious, so they're available, but.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm on the side of, um, not going through ones that, that clearly don't apply just for the sake of efficiency. It's already a, you know, fairly lengthy meeting, we've got a ways to go here. Um, we guess we can take a vote on it and see how, how it goes, we've got a motion, do we get a second? Second from Anita. All in favor of finding those sections cited by Crystal not, not applicable, uh, please signify by saying aye, Andy?
No.
Anita?
Hi.
Crystal?
Aye.
And it's an eye from me, the motion carries three to two. Um, so I guess then we're on the, we'll go on the site plan criteria first, since we did that. Um, we being I. Um, I guess, I guess gotta get my place. We're going to section six. Almost there, approval criteria, okay. And the numbers you gave, uh, Crystal, just for my notes.
Uh, not applicable are four, six, seven, nine, 11, and 12, which is, and if you look at the copy that Jeremy sent, he very kindly highlighted the ones that are keeping with our. So we have one, two, three, five, eight, 10.
Yeah. Yep. Okay, so the first of the appro- the approval criteria is number one, preserve and enhance the landscape. The landscape shall be preserved in its natural state insofar as practical. By minimizing treatment, we will disperse the soil and maintaining existing vegetation during construction. After construction is completed, landscaping shall be designed and planted to define, soften, or screen the appearance of off-street parking areas from the public right-of-way and abutting properties and or structures in the minimized approach for the proposed use on neighboring land uses. Discussion.
I'll make a motion that the criteria for preserving and enhancing landscape has been met in large part to the fact that all the construction will be done from the water side, not the inside.
Great.
Second.
Second from Andy, okay. Second from Andy, okay, and a vote, Andy?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Chris O?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
That's an eye from me. Okay. Number one, deemed satisfied. Number two is erosion control. Filling excavation, earth moving activity shall be carried out in a way that keeps erosion sedimentation to a minimum, including preservation and protection of natural vegetation where possible. Keeping duration of exposure of disturbed soils to a shorter period is possible and stabilizing disturbed soils as quickly as practicable. Use of temporary vegetation or mulching to protect exposed critical areas during development. Use of debris basin, sediment basin, silt traps, or other acceptable methods to trap the sediment from stormwater runoff. No storage of fill materials within fifty feet of the banks of any stream, intermittent, perennial, or water body. No removal of topsoil from any lot except that for that removed from areas to be occupied by buildings, paving, or other services that will not be revegetated. Discussion.
All of those are criteria made clear in the written plan. These are all things that take place during the construction process and thereafter until it's stabilized. How can we be sure that those criteria are met?
I mean, I would refer back to, you know, the civil detail sheet. You know, they have a permit with DEP as well that requires erosion control. We're gonna, we're gonna monitor these sites. One, once the permit's issued, we'll monitor when it goes in and we'll make sure. I mean, I think, you know, I don't know what else to say other than the, the consultant has provided a cut sheet and details on how they're addressing erosion issues. This one again is, it's really going to be just for the installation of the stairs. And certainly no storage of material. You know? And they have proposed, you know, they've got the erosion control details. I would just rely on the, the plans that were submitted and the permits that were issued by the Department of the DEP.
Okay, thank you.
I would make a motion that the erosion control as stated on C2 fulfill the requirements of of erosion control on this project.
Second.
Ethan bounced out of here for some, for some reason, he's trying to get back in. You've got, no, he's trying. I don't see him.
He'll have to go over and get on Phil Gerard's computer.
Everybody stand up and scratch.
All right, I don't, don't see him, doesn't look like he's, huh. Well, this is interesting. Maybe he's stretching.
Yeah.
Do we have a fill in?
I'm just trying to think if we ever had elections.
Never, we never did appoint a vice chair.
It just, it just said airing meeting, so I don't know what's going on.
Can you declare a temporary vice chair to keep the meeting going?
You can call him a facilitator. Doesn't have to be vice chair, it can be a facilitator.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that Chris O continues as a facilitator in Ethan's absence.
Yeah.
All right, so we had a motion, Chris, so we had a motion and a second, Mark motion and, and Andy seconded it.
Andy made the motion work.
Oh, okay, I thought it was Mark and Andy, sorry.
I thought I did also.
It was Mark, it was Mark.
Maybe.
Andy. Um, so you got a motion and a second on that it meets the erosion control based on the C2, the plans that were submitted. Chris, so you want to entertain a vote of you guys that are here?
Yeah, I'll take a, no, I, oh, sorry, I thought I was talking about the motion to appoint me.
Oh.
Yes.
That was made by Andy.
That needs a vote.
That was made by Andy and that needs to.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Uh, does someone have to nominate Pat to be a voting member now, because Ethan's gone?
Well, I'm the alternate, so I can just jump in.
I think she should just be appointed, it should be on the record that she's appointed as a voting member.
Oh, okay. All right, so I second the motion for Chris O to step in as facilitator.
And Pat to be appointed as voting member.
Or I'll, we'll do, do the same. I'll do a roll call vote, all in favor, Andy?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
I guess that's an eye from me. And I'll appoint Pat as, as a voting member for the duration. Uh, so we have a motion on
erosion control.
Roll. We have a motion and a second. Your roll call vote, Pat?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Andy?
Hi.
And that's an eye from me. So we, the erosion control standard has been met.
All right, I'm forwarding, I'm, I'm gonna forward this off to Ethan again. He says it's just still spinning, so I'm gonna forward this off to him.
Okay, we'll keep going.
Yeah.
Uh, number three, relationship of the proposed building to environment and neighboring buildings. The physical placement of proposed buildings or structures on the site shall fit harmoniously with the terrain of the site. The neighboring buildings or structures taking into account bulk location, height of buildings or structures, and such natural features as slope, soil type, and drainage ways. Proposed buildings or structures shall not interfere unreasonable with solar access of existing buildings or adjacent parcels. Any discussion on number three? Uh, someone want to make a motion?
Um, I make a motion to that we meet the requirements for the relationship of the proposed building to environment and neighboring buildings, number three.
All right, is there a second?
Seconded.
All in favor, Anita?
Hi.
Andy?
Hi.
Pat?
Aye.
Mark?
Hi.
Yeah, that's an eye from me. Criteria three, relationship proposed building has been met. Number five, surface water drainage. Adequate provision shall be made for surface drainage so that removal of storm waters will not have an unreasonably adverse effect on neighboring properties. Downstream water quality, soil erosion, public storm drain system, whenever possible onsite absorption of runoff waters shall be used to minimize discharges from the site. Drainage facilities shall be designed for a twenty-five year storm frequency. There's your storm frequency again. Uh, any discussion?
I would say this is not applicable.
It seems to me that this is covered in the erosion control, that there isn't any additional aspect of it that isn't covered there, but maybe I don't know.
Did Mark make a motion it wasn't applicable or no?
He said it was, he didn't, I don't know if that was a motion, was that a motion, Mark?
I would make that a motion.
Uh, is there a second?
Seconded.
Thank you. Uh, all in favor that the surface water drainage is not applicable to this application? Uh, Mark?
Hi.
Anita?
I guess I would say I, uh, it, yeah, because I, because I'm, because it's a mix of erosion control is really what's applicable.
Yeah.
Oh, Ethan in the room, should I let him in?
Well, let him in. Pat?
Aye.
Andy?
Hi.
And that's an eye from me. So surface water drainage is not applicable to this.
Sorry, y'all, I'm back, not sure what happened there.
We replaced you and we're up to, uh.
We're on to number eight.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Chris O roll for a while.
We're on to exterior lighting. Uh, number eight, exterior lighting. All exterior lighting shall be designed shielded to avoid undue adverse impact on neighboring properties and rights of way. Uh, is there any lighting on this dock?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's what I thought.
And the lights.
Yeah.
The cut sheets on the application, yeah.
Any discussion?
I believe those are look-down lights that are on the posts.
Yeah.
And I, I would say that they, they meet the criteria because they because of the way they're oriented according to the description.
Is that, is that a motion, Anita?
Uh, well, is the discussion, it can be a motion if there's no more discussion?
Seconded.
Uh, roll call vote, Andy?
Hi.
Pat?
Aye.
Mark?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
And that's an eye from me. The exterior lighting meets the criteria. Number ten, special criteria for warves, breakwaters, municipal boat ramps, municipal piers, consolidated piers, causeways, marinas, bridges over twenty feet in length and other uses projecting into water bodies requiring site plan approval under the terms of this ordinance. In addition to the above approval criteria, the site must be demonstrated to be suitable for the proposed use according to the following special criteria. For sentence amended six twenty-two thousand six, project must not cause undue erosion on or near the site. B, the proposed use must not cause degradation of marine life in or near the area. Board may ask for an examination statement by qualified marine biologist regarding the impact of the project. That statement shall show no significant adverse impact on marine life. Is there a discussion on number ten?
Uh, I seem to remember from our last, from our last review of this, that, that it was cleared from, was it EPA or DEP?
DEP, an Army Corps, yeah.
If they, if they cleared it, we'll have to count on their evaluation. I don't know if you're, if we want to require a marine biologist also to look at it, maybe that's what the discussion is.
Well, we, I mean, we, we can say that we have the sign off from DEP.
I thought there was a letter in the application from marine biologists.
Department of Marine Resources.
Marine DMR has, yeah.
Yeah.
And they said it's fine, if they said it's fine, I'm fine with it.
Yeah. So is that a motion?
I will move that the criteria of number ten have been met.
Seconded.
Mark? You all in favor?
Yeah.
Was that an eye?
Well, I'm looking for department, uh, letter here, and I'm missing page seven and eight, which actually explain their feeling on this issue.
Do you want me to read it?
Um, yeah.
All right, this, I, I refer, you're referring to Heidi Layton from the Department of Marine Resources.
Yes.
Fish management program. Uh, the applicant proposes to construct a six by, six foot by hundred and six foot, uh, permanent pier supported by four by six granite header in the upland and two granite cribs in the inner tidal. And then she goes on to describe the crib dimensions and the float. Uh, construction access will occur by water. Uh, the pier will be constructed large, more just offshore. Proposed location, the pier system is in Camden Harbor, southwest of Sherman's Cove. Uh, in the town of Camden, the area is residential with piers on nearby properties. Camden Harbor experiences commercial and recreational marine use. And there are many moorings in this subtitle in front of this property. Habitat at the location is cobble beach with intermittent boulders, shellfish, shellfish harvesting is prohibited in this location. No shellfish, marine worm resource have been documented in the project footprint. Eelgrass resources are located in the subtitle in front of this property, were most recently mapped by DMR in twenty-ten. The project as proposed may impact marine resources or habitat, this impact since the float ramp will be removed seasonally. The float does terminate outside of the map eelgrass resource. However, the chains attaching to mooring blocks proposed to secure the float may cause some scouring impact to SAV. No impact on traditional fishing, recreational repairing access is expected. That's from Heidi Layton of DMR. And we have a, also, I'll just include it uh, from Becca Steel Wildlife Biologist with IFNW. Uh, minimal impacts to inland fisheries and wildlife are anticipated for this project. Let me know if you have any questions. That's, that's what we got from IFNW and Marine Resources, and they, they get that from DEP as part of their permitting process. Um, so it gets, goes to DEP and then they forward out to other agencies. Okay.
Thank you, that's what I, that's what I was looking for.
Yeah.
Okay, guys. Uh, so we have a motion that with those submitted the criteria for ten has been met. I'll do a roll call vote, Anita?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Andy?
Hi.
And that's an eye for me, thank you, Mark, for pulling, getting Jeremy to pull those up for us. Uh, number ten has been met. And that's the last of the performance criteria. Ethan, if you're back.
Now, that's the approval criteria in Article twelve, and now maybe Ethan can jump over to the shoreline zoning article ten.
Like Ethan, now you're back, if you want to.
So you're the designated survivor, Chris.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I apologize, I don't know what happened, but I did have to restart the phone to get back in. But thanks for carrying on and thanks, Pat, for stepping in, Chris, as well.
So to be clear, Ethan's now, um, back as a voting member or just facilitating?
Chair.
We, we can do either way, whatever is, yeah, I, I mean, it sounded like back as chair, but I, I can sit it out too and let, let, let the machine keep rolling, it doesn't matter to me either way. Is it better for the record to have the same board on the whole project?
Well, you didn't start that way.
Uh, that's true.
As long as it's clear that that's what's happening. And now the five regular members are voting again, is that?
So we make a motion for Ethan to resume as chair of the meeting.
And, and Pat to, um, go back to an alternate.
Sorry, Pat.
So good that you were here, though.
Yeah.
Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Do a roll call, all in favor, Pat, your last vote for the night?
Hopefully.
Maybe.
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
That's an eye for me. Welcome back, Ethan.
Thank you.
You have the con.
Um, you, you have, you have the, um, the misfortune of being too proficient in your, in your. the misfortune of being too proficient in your, in your role that you might actually end up taking on more than you, than you bargained for.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start making a lot of screw ups.
That's, that's what I always do, but it doesn't seem to help me. Um, okay, shoreline zoning standards are next on the agenda for Article 10 Performance Standards. Um, Part One, Section One, Shoreland Areas. Um, and we're gonna go through these item by item. Um, as you noted, uh, 8A was not included in the applicant's, um, submission, but it is covered into the harbor portions. We're just gonna go through this one now. Um, so I'll read through it. Uh, number eight is, uh, piers, docks, wharves, bridges and other structures and uses extending over or below the normal high water line of a water body or within a wetland and shore stabilization. In addition to federal or state permits, which may be required for such structures and uses, piers, docks, wharves, breakwaters, causeways, marinas, bridges over 20 feet in length and uses projecting in water bodies shall conform to the following standards. All references to inner harbor, outer harbor and coastal harbor shall be in those areas as defined in the harbor rules and regulations of the Town of Camden. 8A, general standards. A, no more than one pier, dock, wharf or similar structure extending or located below the normal high water line of a water body or within a wetland is allowed on a single lot, except that when a single lot contains at least twice the minimum shore frontage specified in Section 9A. A second structure may be allowed and may, may remain as long as the lot is not further divided. Are we gonna go on these, each one individually here? I think that's probably the way. Discussion?
It's.
I mean, there's, there's only one pier.
It's fine. It's one pier.
Right. So almost not applicable, but we'll just go ahead and say, because there's only one pier, this standard is met. That's my motion.
Second.
Roll call. Anita?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Chris O?
Hi.
Andy?
Hi.
And it's an eye from me. B, excuse me, B, access from the shore shall be developed on soils appropriate for such use and construction, constructed, so as to control erosion. Um, interesting, because I will point out here that this does seem to put some of the erosion control that Pat was questioning under the purview of the board. Um, you read on that, Jeremy?
I mean, keep in mind that thi- this applies to every shoreline, you know, all, all projects, um, always, so, um, you know, um, I, I, yeah, I, I don't, uh.
You know, I, I would propose that, that they are not disturbing the existing soil. They're, they're building a stairway to the pier.
Seconded.
Well, yep, it wasn't a motion. That was just, I'm proposing that, so, uh, how do we put that into a motion? So, um, so the B, access from shore shall, will not be developed and soils will not be disturbed due to the construction of stairway for access to the pier.
Seconded.
Um, Ethan, could I, would you mind if I commented?
Yes, please.
I don't wanna slow things down, but I also don't wanna misrepresent anything. I mean, there will be soil disturbance. There's posts that need to go into the ground.
Yep, yeah, that's where I was going with this. Well, thank you. Um, my, my feeling, I'd rather do this, um, even though it's not in the site plan, that we condition the, the issue of the permit to, uh, any access to the pier shall be developed on so, soil appropriate for such use and constructed, so as to control erosion in conformance with, uh, shoreline zoning and erosion control ordinances.
And the plans that were submitted and the plans that were.
Plans and the plans that were submitted.
Yeah, I like that much better. I withdraw my motion.
That's why I was having a little, uh, confusion about the reading of the, uh, the one we voted on before that related to erosion. It's like, yeah, that's the future plan. We hope that they will comply. So I prefer, uh, Ethan's phraseology that it's.
Yeah, so we're conditioning the permit on that. That's a motion. Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay. Roll call vote. We'll go to Anita.
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Andy?
Hi.
Chris O?
Hi.
And it's an eye from me. So B is, can, the permit is conditioned on, uh, meeting shoreline and Camden erosion control ordinances. Uh, C, the location shall not interfere with existing development or natural beach areas. Discussion?
If there isn't a natural beach area there, although there is access to the shore nearby for the public.
But this does.
It does not appear to interfere with it.
Is that a motion?
Um, that's my comment. If you'd like to be a motion, I'll make it a motion.
Second.
Okay, uh, Anita?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Chris O?
Hi.
Andy?
Hi.
It's an eye from me. As to D, the facilities shall be located so as to minimize adverse effects on fisheries. And there is some overlap here with, um, what we already discussed. You just need a motion.
Uh, I move that it is located so as to minimize adverse effects on the fisheries as, um, um, and make reference to the letter from the Marine Resources about, uh, their mapping of that there isn't shellfishing being done in that area and it's too shallow for any kind of official fishing, fishing.
Okay. Second. Second. Take a roll call vote. Uh, Lita? Chris O?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Andy?
Hi.
And that's an eye from me. Uh, E, the facility shall be no larger in dimension than necessary to carry on the activity and be consistent with the surrounding character and uses of the area. A temporary pier, dock or wharf in non-tidal wa- waters shall not be wider than six feet.
Your motion, ability is not larger than necessary.
I move that it fits those criteria. That it is not, uh.
I think Chris just made a motion. Did you, Chris O?
Yeah.
Okay.
Seconded.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Uh, Anita?
Hi.
Pat, I'm, oh, sorry, not Pat. Uh, Chris O?
Hi.
Andy?
Hi.
And Mark?
Hi.
That's an eye from me. F, no new structure shall be built on, over or budding a pier, wharf, dock or other structure extending beyond the normal hot water line of a water body or within a wetland unless the structure requires direct access to the water body or wetland as an operational necessity.
Does not apply.
Okay.
No, it's not.
No, it, it applies. It's, it's operational necessity to have a dock is.
Right.
Is what, what we're talking about. So it's, it shall be built because it's an operational necessity.
I see. Sorry.
Right?
I'm reading it a little differently.
So it means the criteria because the purpose of the dock is to have direct access to the water body, right?
Yeah.
Ethan, do you mind if I just give a quick clarification?
Yeah, please, Will, cuz I'm puzzled.
This criteria is talking about a structure built on the pier or wharf.
That's what I thought, yeah.
And there's nothing proposed to be built on the pier or wharf.
That's what I thought. That's.
Like an ice fishing hut.
Right, or a bait shack.
Okay, that, that should, uh, inform our next motion.
That's why Anita said it didn't apply.
Right. I agree.
I missed a word.
Mm hmm.
I second to me, Anita's motion.
All right. Uh, Anita?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Andy?
Hi.
Chris O?
Hi.
It's an eye from me. Does not apply. F, uh, G, new permanent piers and docks on non-tidal waters shall not be permitted unless it is clearly demonstrated to the planning board that a temporary pier or dock is not feasible. This is a permanent. What?
This doesn't apply either.
Not applicable. It's non-tidal.
Uh, yes.
Second.
Roll call vote. Andy?
Hi.
Chris O?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Anita?
Does not apply.
Eye from me.
H, H doesn't apply as well, Ethan.
Yeah, cuz it's another structure built on.
Yep. So motion?
Not applicable. Standard H is not applicable.
Second?
Second.
Uh, roll call. Lita?
Not applicable.
Chris O?
Hi.
Andy?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
It's an eye from me. Okay, uh, we're on the vegetation may be removed in excess of standards in Section 14 of this ordinance in order to conduct shoreline stabilization of an eroding shoreline provided that a permit is obtained from the planning board.
This doesn't apply either.
Yeah, they're not.
Recommendation.
Can I ask a question?
Mm hmm.
Uh, the riprap, the riprap that is shown, um, west of the pier on that property, is that a pre-existing riprap?
Yes.
You need to take the iPhone the other day. Sorry, never mind. Keep going.
He was, he, I remember him pointing. He's asking if you didn't see it from the iPhone yesterday, the other day when we did the sidewalk.
Uh, yeah, I'll make a motion that this is not applicable because no vegetation is planned to be removed according to the plan.
There's no, there's no tree that's, I thought there was maybe one tree or something. He moved.
Not for the pier?
Not, yeah.
For the stairs? No?
No, not for the stairs. It was like next to that tree that.
Okay.
We were, we were using a tree as a sort of guideline of where, roughly where it would be.
Okay.
Was that second?
I'll second. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll second it.
All right, roll call vote. Anita?
Hi.
Chris O?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Andy?
Hi.
And an eye from me.
Um, if you're using what I sent you earlier, J is tucked in at the end of that, uh, last of I, so, uh, I don't know what you're using, but J is about a deck over a river and this is, there's air in our ordinance. So I would say J does not apply. Ask you to find that doesn't apply as well.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
Mine only goes through H.
No, it's, it's sort of, it's a weird, it's a weird formatting. If you look on the second page, there's, there's, it says B, vegetation must occur and then J, a deck or river may be existed.
Mm hmm.
But it's, it's not applicable because it's.
I see where you're at. Yep, okay.
So I think there was a motion on not applicable.
Yeah, J is not applicable. I made that motion.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, roll call vote from Anita?
Hi.
Chris O?
Yes.
Andy?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
And it's an eye from me. J does not apply. That brings us down to 8B, piers.
And Ethan, I just wanted to just throw this in. Um, some of these were already reviewed under your approval criteria when you looked at some of the things. So when you talked about height and those kinds of things, so I'm just throwing that out there. So keep.
All right, uh, A, height of walkway of piers and wharves in shoreline area adjacent to the inner harbor and outer harbor areas is defined in the harbor rules and regulations of the Town of Camden shall not exceed six feet above mean high water. In the shoreline area adjacent to coastal harbor, the height shall not exceed 10 feet above mean high water.
Uh, make a motion that the plan does not, that the application does not exceed six feet above mean high water. It meets the, it meets the height requirements.
Second.
Motion is second. Uh, Lita?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Chris O?
Hi.
Andy?
Hi.
And that's an eye from me. Uh, B, the maximum width of the walkway of the pier in the shoreline area adjacent to the coastal and outer harbor areas should, shall not exceed four feet. The overall width of the pier at the walkway should not exceed six feet. Piers and wharves in the shoreline area adjacent to the inner harbor area should not exceed 12 feet in width. The width and base of the pier shall be in conformance to standard engineering practices.
May I have here a definition of walkway of the pier? Will?
Yeah, I was gonna say, do you mind if I comment? So the, the ordinance doesn't have a definition of walkway of the pier. And this was duplicated in the harbor ordinance, but the harbor ordinance was changed a few years ago because this definition didn't make sense and nobody could figure out what the difference was between the walkway of the pier and the width of the walkway. So in one sentence, it says four feet and then another sentence it says six. And the problem with having duplicate things in the harbor ordinance and the zoning ordinance is that this one got missed. So it did get changed in the harbor ordinance, but not here.
Jeremy, are you making note of that?
I, I've already made note of that, Anita. That is, it is something, there's, there's a couple of these kind of issues in our, in our zoning ordinance.
Not that we'll have any more docs to do, but.
Yeah.
I mean, could, could that measurement pertain to the, uh, ramp?
I don't know. And, and for a long time, Mark, we've had this discussion with the harbor committee and, and nobody really was sure where this came from or what it was trying to get to.
Could it relate to the stairs going down?
Well, the, the stairs going down, the DEP doesn't allow stairs to the shore to exceed four feet. So those stairs are four feet. The gangway is only three. Um, so if it applies to either of those, we meet that. It's not clear to me that that's what it applies to. Um, and we clearly are less than the the overall width of the pier at the walkway of six feet.
Yes, but that's six feet on the inside of the railings, uh, and.
No, it's five feet on the inside of the rail and five foot eight to the outside.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was Mark's question earlier about the overall width.
Right.
The difference with six feet and five.
I guess I would, uh, make a recommendation that you, uh, make a motion on this, um, base and base your review criteria in this section. I mean, you're gonna get back to the harbor um, ordinance here shortly. Um, right, and it's in there. Um, so I would just make a recommendation that this is, uh, this has been reviewed um, by the harbor committee and your review is consistent with the review and approval that they have granted. I think that's probably the best way to handle that one.
So moved. Any seconds?
Second.
All right, um, Gina, you got all that?
Nope.
We've got it on YouTube.
I have to go back and listen.
You're gonna make her watch this again?
I think it's just a Scrivener's error. That's how I'd look at it.
And it, and it was reviewed and approved and these plans are consistent with the approval of the harbor committee and the harbor ordinance. How's that? And the harbor ordinance, how's that?
The maximum width is in compliance with the approval of the harbor committee.
I like using, I like using the harbor ordinance, isn't that what supersedes?
That's what I meant.
The committees. Committee doesn't make the rules.
Yep.
I think you could say that, um, it is acknowledged that there's a Scrivener's error in this item. It was intended to be the same as that in the harbor ordinance. And that is the criteria that you're using or something like that, I.
Sounds good.
Okay, did we get a motion in a second?
Think so.
Chris, so what, just make a motion?
My motion was, was, um, kind of covered that, but.
Between, between us, we made a motion in a second.
All right.
Why don't we try one more swing at it, Chris, so just to clean it out for Jeannie? So she knows who made the motion and who made the second.
That the, with the walkway is in compliance with the standards and with the harbor ordinance with the notation that there's a Scrivener's error regarding the four feet. That work?
Yes, that works for me, thank you. And a second?
Seconded.
Thank you, Andy, uh, roll call vote, Anita.
Hi.
Andy.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Chris O.
Hi.
And it's an eye from me. Uh, C, fender pilings, bollards, railings, or other accessory structures which extend above the walkway of, or pier or wharf shall be limited to a height of six feet above the walkway. Railings shall be substantially open in construction to minimize visual interference from both shore and water.
I'll make a motion that this standard has been met.
I, I second that.
Great, uh, roll call vote for Anita.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Andy.
Hi.
Chris O.
Hi.
That's an eye from me. Motion carries, uh, next to D. No pier shall be constructed within thirty feet horizontal distance of the point where the property line intersects the harbor line in the shoreline area adjacent to the coastal and outer harbor areas. In the inner harbor area, there shall be no required setback except where a business district, but the residential district, in which case the setback shall be ten feet in the line between two districts.
I'm counting, I, I'm counting on you guys because I don't have clarity in my head about how it suit, how it fits those criteria.
Well, in the application on page one hundred and sixteen, I think, uh, the, you know, the reasons why they meet them are all detailed in there.
Yeah, it's, it's explained of the distances. And some of that, Anita, was all the, was the discussions that we had about the abutters and the abutting property lines that we've had. Um, so I'll make a motion that the criteria has been met as outlined in the plan.
Seconded.
Thank you. Anita.
Hi.
Mark.
I'm unclear on that, being honest with you, I, um.
Okay, uh, I have the notes from the applicant reading, the project parcel is located within the outer harbor. The proposed pier is located at a minimum plus or minus one hundred forty-nine feet from the point where the property line intersects the harbor line of the closest property line. And it requires a minimum of thirty feet.
And it's a hundred and fifty-two feet from the southern property line, right?
Yeah, right.
There's the harbor line.
This is not the three hundred foot, uh, distance that's required between piers.
Right.
Just within the, the, just the property line itself.
It's geometry that gets, uh.
And my, my understanding of this, Mark, is that we have like something like a, pretty close to a three hundred feet of, 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 uh, you know, waterfront, and, um, this is kind of like smack in the middle of it.
Right, but the harbor line where it intersects the harbor line.
Will, can you add some clarity to this?
Yeah, do you mind if I share the screen real quick?
No, I think you should.
I say, there's that.
So where the prop, the southern property line is right here and where it hits the harbor line is right there. Thirty feet from it brings you here. Pier's way out in the middle of the property. Northerly, it's the same thing, the property line hits the harbor line, harbor line is mean high water. And the thirty-foot setback would be here. So that's the only limitation under this criteria.
You said harbor line means high water line?
Yeah, the definition of high water line is mean high water.
Or harbor line, you mean? Is that cleared up, Mark, or are you still unclear?
That's, that's complicated wording, isn't it? But, yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll approve it.
I think the intent is to keep these off of, in the, you know, because it gets down to ten feet elsewhere. Um, for commercial areas, I think the intent is just, just try, try to keep these off, off of, you know, so close to someone's property.
Even if it's, you know, three hundred feet from a pier, not to put it right next to somebody else's property line.
Right, mm hmm.
Oh, wait, it is, it is. But, you know, it just dawned on me, I, I clicked in, I've got it, I understand.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, it is, it is ugly the way it's written, in my opinion, so not to.
Well, it's, it's, it's trying to describe geometry with language and it just doesn't flow, but but I think that our, our applicant has met the criteria.
Yes.
Right.
I agree.
So was that, uh, we were on a vote from you, Mark?
Yes, and I, yeah, yes.
Okay, and I'm not sure if I got Andy.
Yes.
And Chris O.
Yes.
We did get Anita, right?
I don't think I'd voted yet, but I'll say yes.
Okay, and it's an eye from me. Uh, E, no pier shall be built within three hundred feet as measured along the shoreline from an existing or from an approved pier or breakwater, except in the shoreline area adjacent to the inner harbor area, the shoreline zone where separation between piers shall not be less than forty feet. And except where the harbor business district, but the residential district, separation between piers should be no less than twenty feet. Uh, no pier within three hundred feet from my recollection of the.
Correct.
Plans.
Yeah, we'll make a motion that it's, the criteria is met as there is no pier within three hundred feet.
Seconded.
All right, great, roll call vote, Anita. Andy.
Hi.
Chris O.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Tonight from me. Moving on to.
Really, really, really quick, Ethan, I just wanted to mention that I have this Zoom meeting going until eight, I don't know what happens on Zoom if you go beyond eight.
Uh, it probably puts you all in limbo where it put me.
Okay, just keep going, if that hap, if that hap.
We don't have a profession, you don't have a pro account, the town?
I, I don't see where I can change that. Um.
Well, it's operating now.
I know, so I'm just saying, if this is the case, if this meeting goes away by, via Zoom, it just appears, we'll continue this to the next meeting, okay?
Will it still be on YouTube? Can people switch to YouTube?
No.
That's what shuts down, okay?
No, Zoom, Zoom will make shutdown.
No, Zoom, uh, I, I, I think that if you only, if you have the, if you don't pay for Zoom, it only lets you do two hours, otherwise it lets you keep going.
We pay for Zoom, we pay for Zoom, so keep going.
To know, okay. Um, F. The location of the structure and the use of the facility shall not conflict with the applicable sections of the harbor rules and the regulations of the town of Camden.
And this is where you may want to jump to those harbor rules, which are, I, I, I included.
Right, so.
Or, or why don't you do G and H and come back to F?
That's a great idea, Jeremy, I'm gonna do G and H and then we'll go to the harbor rules.
Mm hmm.
Um, let's go to G. No structures shall be permitted on piers, wharves, or breakwaters, except temporary structures and permanent non-building type structures allowed under the regulations of that district.
Not applicable as there are no structures proposed on the pier.
Great.
Seconded.
Anita.
I have a question. Um, I rather liked the proposal that we continue this at the next meeting. I'm wondering whether there is anything that, uh, would make that a problem uh, if we don't continue, we've been at it for three hours, um, as you can see, had to get up and get something to eat. Um, I just wondered whether we can continue this later.
Well, I think we've only got two other criteria.
Yeah, we're really close.
Other than the harbor stuff.
Well, I, I think I can handle that pretty quickly.
I see, I see us only halfway through this.
I'd like to make motion on F that the harbor committee has determined that it meets all harbor rules and regulations.
And we accept their findings.
Yes, that covers that.
That's, is that sufficient for everybody?
Have you entered that into the record yet? That recommendation?
No, but that is something that we received, um.
And it can be done right now, and, and just.
I will, I move that we enter into the record, the town of Camden Harbor Committee Review of Proposed Pier and Float in Outer Harbor at Twenty-Six Harbor Road for John Rixon and Mary Kelly, Gartley and Dorsey applicants, December eighth, twenty twenty-one. And.
And, and I would include that you're also relying not only on that, but also on the plans that were submitted, because those plans were all, all, all reviewed by the, same plans reviewed by the harbor committee and you guys reviewed those. A lot of these standards are those dimensional requirements and those, looked at those already as to the harbor committee.
Okay, and, and in approving this criterion, we are relying on the, uh, harbor committee assessment and the application itself.
I think that makes sense.
Okay, uh, roll call vote on that one, that's Mark.
Hi.
Andy.
Hi.
Anita.
Hi.
Chris O.
Hi.
And it's an eye from me. Um, that takes us back to, we had one or two more.
Well, we, I don't think you voted on G.
That's what I mean, we have one or two more, so did we, we had sort of intervening, um, uh, to go back to F, so now we're on G again. And there are no structures on the, on pier, and we had a motion from Chris O in a second. So let's vote on G now. That is not, not, not applicable. Roll call vote to Andy.
Hi.
Uh, Mark.
Hi.
Anita. I, and Chris O.
Hi.
It's an eye from me. Um, and then H. No filling is permitted beyond officially established harbor line, except in connection with the construction of municipal pier or boat ramp.
I'll make a motion that is not applicable as there is no fill as part of this application.
Seconded.
You have a motion in a second, roll call vote to Mark.
Hi.
Andy.
Hi.
Anita. Chris O.
Hi.
It's an eye from me. Um. If I'm not mistaken, that covers the review of, uh, the application for a pier at Twenty-Six Harbor Road. Um. Jeannie, is there anything you're missing?
Can I just add, I just wanted to quickly add on that, I, I appreciate Mark's, um, you know, doing the kind of the holistic, um, approval there. I, I, I want the public that may be out there to recognize that the board had a workshop on this section, on this and reviewed these criteria and went over this stuff. So it wasn't that we just, you guys didn't look at this, I just want to make that clear for the record. You guys did look at those standards, um, as part of the review.
Yeah.
And also, a lot of them are the same, it's just confirming the same criterion.
Exactly, thank you.
So noted. Um, we need to take then a final vote to approve the application.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Andy.
Yeah, I wanted it noted into the record that, you know, I, I think it interferes with navigation along the shore uh, because of the height of the pier. And given, you know, that the pier will be, you know, uh, at risk of being underwater at the highest astronomical tide or very close to that. That, you know, I, I think that's a problem and that, you know, if in the future the ordinance changes and the height is allowed to be raised, then the pier should be raised to one alleviate the issue of interfering with navigation and two uh, reduce the risk of the pier, you know, being underwater.
Are you suggesting that you'd like to make that a condition of the permit?
Yes.
Any discussion on that?
I don't think you can at this point.
I don't think we can make it a, a condition that they raise it if we change the ordinance, I don't.
I mean, here's one suggestion, is maybe getting, going back to, um, kind of the holistic review that you just did on this standard. Um, why don't you um, why don't you just pull out F? And let Andy vote on, on, this is from F two F from the harbor ordinance where that talks about adversely affects small recreational boating activities to a substantial degree. I think that's what Andy has concerns with.
Right.
But if you vote that one specific, everything else was unanimous, five to zero, except if you guys want to amend that one last motion on the harbor stuff to say F and let, let add in, let you guys all vote on it, and Andrew can at least vote the way he really feels on that navigation piece, because that's where that would come into play.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Well, that won't address the height or changing the height at a future date, that's just, it's agreement.
Right.
Can I make a comment on that when we vote to go into the record?
Sure.
Okay.
Does that sound good and fair to everybody? I mean, Andy did bring it up, and this would be the, this would be the time that he would have brought it up again in that rev, in that review, that one section. So I appreciate that the harbor committee voted, said it didn't find it, and it sounds like the majority of the board is not going to find that it's going to adversely affect small recreation. But Andy seems to think it is, so that's his right, and you ought to, being a voting member, you ought to be able to vote um, away on a certain thing rather than a whole a big kind of omnibus approval of, on five to zero of those harbor standards.
Yep.
Well, it looks like the harbor committee, uh, or harbor committee review voted four to one on that, too.
Yeah.
So adversely affecting small recreational boating activities.
Okay, so somebody else had concerns too, okay.
Does someone want to make?
If we adopt, if, if we adopt their, their, uh, approval wholesale, you could just be that one person, Andy.
By default.
I have a question, um.
Go ahead, Anita.
If you're looking at those details, uh, E is also affected uh, because, uh, the public is allowed to, uh, walk along the intertidal zone.
Only if they're, only if they got a fishing pole with them.
Yeah, fine, does, they have a fishing pole with them. They cannot, they, I, I assume that they cannot climb over the private property of the dock to get around.
Or they walk under it.
Well, they can't walk under. Well, they can't walk under it. It's not high.
If you can walk on the shore, it's low tide, so then you can walk under it.
Ah, alright.
Fair enough. I, I, I mean, sorry.
You want, does someone want to amend that last motion that was unanimous of five to zero and, 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 and specifically look at F point two F and, and let that, you guys vote on that once, one section.
Yeah, unlike Andrew do that. Is, is he gonna do that? Where'd you go?
Should ask Mark maybe if he can amend his motion.
Yeah, so Mark, we're, we're dealing with the motion that you made to adopt the Harbor Committee's review. Can you make an exception to that for the one point that, that Andrew's raising?
I don't want to do that, but what I will do is just withdraw my motion and let Crissow make his own motion on that.
Okay.
Seconded.
Just make a friendly amendment. So we're making a motion to accept the findings of the Harbor Committee with the exception of F2F.
Yep. And also base that on your review of the plans as well, Crissow.
Based on our review of the plans? What you're saying?
Yeah. Got a second?
Jeremy, does that mean you're gonna vote separately on two F?
Uh, yeah, they're gonna vote separately on two F.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, Crissow, did you reference the Harbor Ordinance in your motion?
No.
I thought I did, but.
You mentioned, you referenced the Harbor Committee.
Yeah, I thought it started with, I may have broke.
Good question.
Anita.
If this, uh, let's say this were voted as adversely affecting. Then what recourse does the property owner have if they have already built the pier as high as they are permitted to build it? And if they want to, if they want to.
There's no, there's no recourse here, Anita. It's, i- i- unless this, if it fails this criteria by the entire board, then by extension, the whole application would fail. Unless we wanted to put conditions in there, but we can't make, raise it. So the question is, do we want to fail, do we want to vote against it and fail the application or not? That's, that's the, you know, people have different perspectives. I've heard Andy's perspective, which is definitely valid, that, you know, small children using that area in a kayak might find the obstruction, uh, you know, interfering with their path. To me, it seems like, you know, with, you're talking about extremely low water or, you know, high water at that point, but if it, you know, lower water, you're going to be going outside of that anyway. And I think that it's, it's not a huge encumbrance on recreation. People can have different opinions. So the question is, as a board, we're, we're trying to do right now the rest of the harbor Committee's review, and then we're going to vote again on section F alone. And if it fails section F by the board, then arguably the whole application fails.
Okay, but what I'm asking is that let's, let's, for the sake of argument, let's say the board says, yeah, it does interfere. That's a fact, you know, or let's say they say that the property owner does not have a legal recourse at this time. So.
Well, they have a legal recourse to take, take it to court.
Right. Or in zoning, we're feeling like.
Appeals to court or whatever.
I don't know. I just think, I think it's.
Just simplify something. We're, I mean, we're getting bogged down in one very, one very particular thing. I kind of have a feeling that it, it's going to be a, it's not going to impact this. Since we already have a motion to approve the Harbor Committee ordinance piece that we've approved, we voted on that, we're looking at our final motion. We could put something as a condition on final motion to say with a note of a minority opinion or that some members of the board maintain concerns about adverse impacts and would, would urge the property owner to mitigate where possible or something. I don't, I, I'm just trying to.
Well, why don't we just take a vote on F and then we can move on?
I mean, okay, so our current motion is the, what I was starting to make that the applicant has met the criteria of the Harbor Ordinance based on.
Put it back up and go along with Andy on this. I don't need to just over, overstep here, but I think Andy's got the right order. I think we want to take F and vote on it. And then we can do all criteria reviewed by the Harbor Committee with not including F as a whole.
I would do it the other way around, but.
Okay, I guess it doesn't matter either way. I, I'll let you go on with your motion.
Mark. So here's an idea. What if we take my original motion? And just do a re-vote on it? And Crissow votes no, we're, we do the same thing. Crissow votes no because.
Or Andy votes no.
What if the motion?
I'm, I'm fine with that too, Mark, and I can talk to, you know, I can have it noted in the record that I've got issues with F if you wanted to do that. I, as long as it goes in the record, I'm.
Right. What if the motion was just that the board voted unanimously to accept this section with the exception of F where one member was opposed? And so it means that you voted unanimously on everything but F. Does that get you there? Because of concerns with interference?
No, I, I think, I think Mark's idea is the cleanest one to say, let's re-vote that motion and Andy can vote against it. With the, with the note in the, in the record of why he does that. Does that work for you, Andy?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think there's, you know, several ways to skin the cat and they all work, right? So.
But it, yeah, it's, uh, okay. It, it's just that we voted on every single thing individually, all the way down the line. And we get to this one, this snag, and it's kind of all or nothing all of a sudden.
We didn't. We voted on everything non-applicable as a group.
Yeah, we haven't done this vote yet.
Like there was one member opposed to the whole thing. That's.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the problem that I have with it because it puts Andy in, in opposition to the entire Harbor Committee report.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna take a swing at it.
Well, can I, one other, one other idea. Uh, Mark, would you accept a friendly amendment to your motion? To pull out second F2F for an individual vote?
Getting all confused now. What, what, what's F2?
This is adversely affecting small recreational boating.
Oh, that could work.
If you take a friend, what's called a friendly amendment, we have a standing vote. We've already done it. We're just gonna amend that to do a standalone vote on that one article.
Okay.
So Genie, can you?
Yeah. Was that someone second that friendly amendment?
Looks like Anita's got the second.
Okay.
That need to be done by roll call vote as well. So, Mark?
Hi.
Crissow?
Hi.
Andy?
This is the motion to vote on F2F.
To pull that out separately, yeah.
I, yeah.
Anita?
Hi.
And it's an eye from me. So then we need one final motion, well, two actually, three. You're following me?
I will make a motion that the application does adversely affect small recreational boating activities to a substantial degree.
Well, uh,
It has to be a positive motion.
No, yeah, that's, yeah, that's not what I, um, what we're looking for here is, uh.
It was a positive.
Right. This, this vote will be one to four likely, or one to, two to four.
I mean, you can also say, I, I mean, you can do it either way. I'm just.
Okay, does anybody want a second?
I'm stuffed.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote on whether this pier does adversely affect small recreation. Is that the, is that the right language?
Right. Recreational boating activities to a substantial.
Substantial, substantial degree. All in favor? Mark?
No.
Crissow?
No.
Anita?
No.
Andy?
Yes.
And it's a no from me.
Motion fails.
Motion fails. Okay, Andy, I hope that helps. I definitely want you to be able to register. No, I mean, I mean that. I want you to be able to register an objection when you can. So I'm glad that we were able to get there even, even though it was messy.
Yeah, and if I can, I'd like it noted in the record. The reason I'm voting no is because of the, you know, the height of the pier is, will not allow kayakers through at high tide. So, you know, if, if the ordinance was higher, I think it would accommodate access under the pier. And it would alleviate, you know, any problems in the future with rising water levels.
So no, and, and I, I will, I will work on, on this.
Andy, I will just, as, as a sidebar, I guarantee every, everybody who's trying to build docks right now, they all want to go higher.
Right.
Like that's, you know, if it could, it would.
That, that's why I want to print the record.
What we still need here is a motion that approves this.
Yeah.
You look like you're ready for that.
Are you making the final motion?
What happens when you speak up?
I'll make a motion that relying on the testimony of the applicant written in oral, the testimony of the Director of Planning and Development Advisory Comments of Harbor Committee. The board approves the site plan for John Rixon and Mary Kelly for property located at Harbor Road for a pier as shown on C1 dated November 23, 2021.
Yeah, but that, that, that's not, I, I don't think we're ready for that. We need a positive motion on F.
I mean, we just, we did a positive motion just in the inverse.
But it was a negative vote, so it, it didn't pass. So.
But the motion was that it, it does.
Rules, right? Doesn't it have to be a, a passing motion?
So it was highly important word?
I would have worded it the other way myself, but I don't know if it has to be.
I don't think it has to. It.
I don't know about that.
Genie, do you have a thought on that?
I thought that the rule was that motions have to be positive so that you're absolutely sure how you're voting.
Yeah, I think it's more about how you're voting as opposed to how it's worded.
Right, which was why I said, which was why I said it the way I did.
So if, if you had said does, does not adversely affect, which is kind of what feels naturally, is nevertheless a double negative.
But the fact that it failed means that it passed.
Right.
Right.
So all the criteria have been met.
And Crissow just made an outstanding motion that I'm looking for a second on.
It's, it's, it's a messy process, Mark. I totally agree with you, but I think we're good.
I.
I mean, if, if you would like, I mean, we could, I could, I'll do a second motion that's, you know, that F2F has been met.
I think we need to do that.
I'll make that motion.
Do, because you, you know, your motion, your, the motion you're making is that all the criteria have been met. And until we vote on this and have a positive vote on it, they haven't been met.
I think you're confusing positive vote with positive motion, but.
And, and, and it's because the, the, the language in that section is that the proposed project will not. So you, you're making multiple negatives.
Well, as I say, it's a double negative. It does not adversely affect.
Okay, oh, fine, fine. It's on you.
You know, there's, there's no reason we can't do another vote the way Mark would like to hear it.
I just put that out there.
Yeah.
I think that, that's a positive motion that Crissow made.
I agree with Genie and I'm gonna just call it that and it's on me, Mark. How about that?
Alright.
Um, I'll, I'll take the fall for it. Um, so Crissow has put out a fantastic motion for approving the permit for the pier located at 26 Harbor Road. Do we have a second?
Second.
Anita, seconds. Roll call vote on approving the pier at 26 Harbor Road. Mark?
Hi.
Andy?
No.
Anita?
Hi.
Crissow?
Hi.
And it's an eye from me. The motion carries four to one. And that's it. Thank you all for your time and for your service.
One more.
Thank you, Will. I know there's one more. Crissow, are you queued up?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
You have to rely on the information, but that's okay. I don't care.
He did that in his motion, Genie. I'm sure of it.
I thought I did. I'm pretty sure I did, but I couldn't.
I'm sure he did.
He did.
Go back on the tape. I'm sure he did. What, Anita? Yes?
Um, I don't know when or what the appropriate venue is, uh, but my husband and I are planning to travel for a year starting about midsummer. So, um, there will be a, uh, an alternate stepping forward come Junish.
Pat, you're on notice. No travel plans for you. Alright, thanks, Will. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you guys. I know it's an odorous process.
Did we, did we vote on the meeting? Did we, did we vote on the adjournment yet?
No.
Did we get a second? I seconded it. That's right. Okay, Mark, to adjourn.
If I say no, do we just have to stay here?
Well, you're, you're one vote.
Are you gonna start serving cocktails?
Crissow?
Ethan, I think, you know, as chairman, you can just adjourn the meeting.
No, I think we have to do it by motion.
True. You don't need to vote.
Oh, we don't?
Nope.
Adjourned. Thank you. Bye, everyone.
Yeah. So you have to go to your bunkers that designated.